Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. Our vice chair, Ms. Lisa Seroles-Lawes, is away traveling on business, so she has an excused absence. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Warwick High School, Michael LaSorda and Shanay? Shanay? Chaney? Ms. Chaney? Okay, Chaney Singleton. Ms. Chaney will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Michael, who will come forward to give the pledge. So, Ms. Chaney, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
My name is Chaney Singleton and I am the sophomore class president of Warwick High School. I attended Hilton Elementary School and Washington Middle School where I was an avid participant in my Student Council Association. I served as the co-president in sixth grade, the secretary in seventh grade, and freshman class president in my first year at Warwick. I am also involved in my school's drama club, student leadership impact organization, and I am also in the process of chartering the E-Mission Club at my school. A club for environmentally conscious students at Warwick. After I graduate, my goal is to attend the Honors College at New York University and major in journalism. Yes, right. It is my great honor, on behalf of all the students of Newport News Public Schools, to share this poem to open our first school board meeting of the year. Let us rise each morning and strive each day to do that which only brings happiness and joy to others. Let us avoid doing things that may cause others hurt and pain. Let us use our minds and our reason to encourage behavior based on mutuality and reciprocity inherent in human relationships. May we always respect the dignity and worth of each other as we deliberate. And let us, above all else, love one another, not to obtain rewards for ourselves now or hereafter, or to avoid punishment, but rather always to bring each other contentment, peace, and equity. So be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chaney, that was outstanding. Following you, it's going to be Michael. Mr. Michael, please come forward and before you begin, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Michael LaSorda, but my friends call me Mikey. I am a senior at Warwick High School and cannot wait to see what adult life has to offer. Educationally, my years at Warwick High School have opened up some great opportunities like becoming part of the Governor's Health Sciences Academy. This program revealed to me what I truly want to pursue as a career. I plan to become a cardiologist or a pulmonologist and will be applying to Virginia Commonwealth University to reach this goal. As a young adult, I love experiencing and learning new things every day. I cherish advice from my elders and I want to continue learning every day. My fourth grade teacher once told me, "Every time you learn something, you gain a new wrinkle on your brain." I would like to thank all my teachers I have had and the ones I will have for contributing to the addition of wrinkles on my brain. Thank you.
Yeah.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a full round of applause. So I see that we're going to have a doctor and we're going to have a news reporter to report all the great things that he's doing. Supporting Chaney and Michael tonight, are there family members in school family? If those are here, please stand to be recognized. The board appreciates your encouragement and again, we thank you for bringing them here to the meeting this evening. Again, our future news broadcasters and our doctor, thank you very much. Great things are happening at Newport News Public Schools and we're glad you came out here tonight. Let's give them one more round of applause. All right, we're going to move the agenda and our next is board recognitions. Dr. Paul.
Two recognitions. Okay.
Tonight, the school board and the superintendent are recognizing seven school communities who've earned recognition by the Virginia Board of Education and the Governor of Virginia for advancing student achievement. The Virginia Index of Performance Awards recognize high achieving schools that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellent goals established by the governor and the Virginia Board of Education. Tonight, Newport News Public Schools is pleased to recognize Deer Park Elementary School and Nelson Elementary School for earning recognition in the VIP Awards Program for advancing student learning and achievement. Deer Park earned a 2019 Board of Education Excellence Award, the second highest honor in the VIP Program. Deer Park exceeded all state and federal accountability student performance standards in reading and math and had a significant number of students demonstrate advanced proficiency and proficiency on all standards of learning tests. Present to accept this recognition on behalf of the Deer Park School community are several members of the leadership team. Please join us in congratulating Principal Mary Jo Anastasia, Assistant Principal Cassandra Stevenson, third grade lead teacher Frida Clear, fourth grade lead teacher Kara Latouche, and fifth grade lead teacher Lori Morgan. Ninety-four percent of Deer Park students passed the reading SOL test with seventy percent earning pass proficient and twenty-four percent achieving pass advanced status. Deer Park students earned a ninety-one percent pass rate on the math SOL test with sixty-three percent earning pass proficient and twenty-eight percent earning pass advanced status. Impressive indeed. Congratulations. I'd invite you to take a picture here, Superintendent, Board Chair. Please pass along our congratulations to all of your school community. Nelson Elementary School earned the Virginia Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award for meeting all state and federal accountability standards for student performance and for making progress toward the goals of the governor and the Board of Education. We're pleased to recognize several members of the Nelson Elementary School team for their efforts in earning a Board of Education Excellence Award. Please assist us in congratulating Principal Dr. Melanie Cam, Assistant Principal Katie Satterwhite, teachers Kim Grizzle, Carrie Hall, and Stephanie Johnson. Eighty-five percent of Nelson students passed the reading SOL test with fifty-three percent earning pass proficient and thirty-two percent achieving pass advanced status. Nelson students also earned eighty-five percent pass rate on the math SOL with a fifty-eight percent earning pass proficient and twenty-eight percent earning pass advanced status. Now, to qualify for the VIP Award, elementary schools must be accredited, exceed federal accountability benchmarks in reading and math, and have a significant number of students demonstrate advanced proficiency. Schools also earn bonus points for the number of students passing the third and fifth grade reading, state reading assessment, and their participation in the Governor's Nutrition and Physical Activity Program. These awards represent a collaborative effort among educators, students, and families. So again, we congratulate Deer Park and Nelson for their among 270 schools in the state to earn recognition in this year's VIP Awards Program. I'd like to note that this marks the eleventh time that Deer Park has earned recognition in this program, and Nelson is a first-time honoree, so congratulations. Congratulations again, and while they make their way back to their seats, I'd like to ask the other members of the Nelson Team Joint to please stand and be recognized. This year, the Virginia Board of Education launched the inaugural Exemplar Performance School Awards to recognize high student achievement and continuous improvement. The awards program recognizes schools for exceeding state accreditation standards, narrowing achievement gaps, and improving outcomes for students. We're pleased to share that six Newport News Schools earned recognition in this program. Deer Park Elementary School and General Stanford Elementary School earned the highest award, the 2019 Board of Education Highest Achievement Award. To receive this distinction, a school had to earn a state rating of accredited and meet or exceed four targets including a seventy percent pass rate on state assessments in science and math, and a seventy-five percent pass rate on state assessments in English, reading, and writing, and no more than a ten percent achievement gap in reading, writing, and math. We're going to again invite Deer Park Team, the Deer Park Team backup, please. Please again congratulate Principal Mary Jo Anastasia, Assistant Principal Cassandra Stevenson, and the lead teachers in third, fourth, and fifth grade. We shared with them if they won two estate awards, they had to make two trips up here. So you've already heard their impressive results, and again, Deer Park earned two awards this year, so we're giving them their due. Congratulations again. Also earning a 2019 Board of Education Highest Achievement Award, General Stanford Elementary School. Accepting this recognition on behalf of their school community is Principal Amelia Hunt, former principal Diane Willis, Assistant Principal Naima Gibbs, third grade lead teacher Karen Canfield, fourth grade lead teacher Miranda Carter, and fifth grade lead teacher John Corcoran.
Congratulations.
Ninety-one percent of General Stanford students passed the English Standards of Learning Test, ninety-two percent passed the math SOL, and eighty-five percent of students passed the Science Standards of Learning Test. Deer Park and General Stanford are just, they're among 52 schools across the Commonwealth who earned the highest achievement award, and it's the most of any school division on the peninsula, so those are our bragging rights right there.
Need some info on that. Need some information on that. Is that somewhere, is that printed or something already? Like General Stafford. Like the only one on the peninsula. General Stafford. Is that printed somewhere? I don't know, post that or something.
And again, please pass along our congratulations to your entire school community. Four Newport News Public Schools earned a 2019 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. Discovery STEM Academy, Dutrow Elementary, Sanford Elementary, and Demby High School. These schools all demonstrated significant achievement in increasing their student scores and advancing student success. To receive this designation, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited or accredited with conditions and meet at least one of four targets, improving performance on accredited-related school quality indicators. Please join me in congratulating the team from Discovery STEM Academy. Principal Christine Pilger, Assistant Principal Brianna Foster, former Assistant Principal Deena Boyd, and lead fifth grade teacher Michelle Braxton, STEM Coordinator Danielle Joyner, and math interventionist Stephanie Hackney. I'd also like to recognize the team from Dutro Elementary School. Principal Travis Humble, Assistant, or former principal Kelly Stewart, Assistant Principal Kim Coleman, fourth grade lead, fourth grade teacher Candace Foster, third grade teacher Ian Wheeler, and second grade teacher Deborah Ward. We'd also like to announce that Dylan Fale, teacher Dylan Fale, has also joined us. Former teacher. And to keep it rolling, accepting the award on behalf of the Sanford Elementary School community is Principal Brian Lieberman, Assistant Principal Suzanne Ramirez, fifth grade lead teacher Kristy McCray, third grade lead teacher Nikki Watson, and Special Education Also earning an exemplar award for continuous improvement, Demby High School. Accepting on behalf of their school community, Principal Dr. Eleanor Blow, Assistant Principal for Instruction Teresa McMath, Assistant Principal for Operations Roland Noel, Science Lead Teacher Jasmine Madison, Math Lead Teacher Nicole Johnson, and English Lead Teacher Rebecca So the ladies and gentlemen before you represent the Exemplar Performance School awardees for continuous improvement. Let's give them all one more round of applause for their hard work. We're going to take pictures. We want to get pictures. We'll do it in shifts. Or do you want to try and get a group shot?
Let's do a school at a time.
Okay, all right. Okay. Again, congratulations to all of our honorees.
Yeah, okay. Somebody say the first. Yeah, I'm like that. Yeah. I did.
I'm going to ask for one more round of applause. There's a lot of hard work happening. Thank you all for coming and joining us this evening. At this time, we're going to take a six-minute break so that our honorees may leave. If they desire to do so, you're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting. During this time, our viewing audience will have opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
I'm Dr. George Parker, Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools. On behalf of our dedicated educators and staff, I want to welcome you to a new school year. This new beginning brings the excitement of many possibilities for our students. Newport News Public Schools has led the way in STEM education through robotics teams and engineering design challenges for elementary, middle, and high school students. By participating in these and many other activities, students are exposed to real-world problems, technology, and occupations. Whether it is the advanced coursework through one of our magnet programs, dual enrollment through Thomas Nelson Community College, or advanced placement classes, our students have an abundance of opportunities to prepare them for the academic rigor of university-level studies. It is no surprise that eighty percent of the students in the graduating class of 2019 participated in honors or college-level courses. Students, I wish you a fun and successful school year. It's important to us that you do your best in the classroom every day and that you enjoy the abundance of social and athletic opportunities that are available. Research has proven that students who are involved in clubs and athletics, on average, outperform those who do not participate. So get involved early and have a great year. Parents, our school division has partnered with Cos Communications to provide a new parent engagement app called LivingTree. This app will enable teachers to communicate more effectively with parents and students throughout the school year. We hope you will take advantage of this resource and be an active partner in your child's education throughout the year. Thank you for this opportunity to wish you a wonderful school year. It is an exciting time to be part of the Newport News Schools family. With your continued support, we will ensure that all students graduate, college, career, and citizen ready.
For half a decade now, Books on Bikes Newport News has encouraged reading through the summer months by passing out free books and ice cold treats. Every week, educators, administrators, and community volunteers bike through neighborhoods to spread the joy of reading. When the school year ended in June, Books on Bikes hosted a kickoff event at the Demby Community Center. Open to the public, the kickoff included free books, fun games, food for the whole family, the chance to meet a published author, and raffle drawings for brand-new bikes. Every week, teachers and staff from Discovery STEM Academy, EPS, Greenwood, and MacIntosh Elementary Schools loaded their bikes with books and popsicles for an evening of reading and sharing. By delivering the books personally to a number of neighborhoods, these caring educators increased students' access to great appropriate books. Each evening ride was highlighted by spontaneous read-alabs, opportunities to build stronger relationships between school and home, and excited students receiving new books to bolster their home libraries. Through the generosity of local businesses, individual donations, city support, and school PTAs, Books on Bikes handed out almost 3,000 books this summer. And over the last five years, Books on Bikes has peddled over 10,000 books to families eager and willing to read in Newport News. For the 12th year, Christopher Newport University's incoming freshmen spent their first day in college serving others. CNU's annual Day One of Service is instrumental in connecting students to their new community and developing civic-minded citizens. Over 650 freshmen, including 450 incoming students to the president's leadership program, volunteered their time with a number of community partners across the peninsula. Seventeen of these sites were Newport News Public Schools, where volunteers were able to help educators prepare for a new school year. Cleaning up courtyards, moving furniture, painting kindness rocks, organizing teacher supplies, and decorating hallways and classrooms were just some of the important tasks that CNU students completed. By engaging their students in the local community, CNU is committed to developing young men and women into contributing citizens. Their example is significant to the younger students in Newport News Public Schools as they gain the skills to become college, career, and citizen-ready. The programs and offerings at each of our high schools in Newport News are simply amazing, but showcasing every high school experience in one place is something to behold. Every year, Sage, the Student Advisory Group on Education, presents the High School Expo at Patrick Henry Mall, giving Saturday afternoon mallgoers an eye-opening exposure to the programs offered to our high schoolers. And what better way for the community and especially prospective high school students to be introduced to these advantages than by current students, who proudly and enthusiastically exhibit how a range of activities and clubs are giving them an extraordinary step forward in their academic life and future careers. Members of Sage meet directly with the superintendent every month and take ownership of their high school experience. This was evident at the expo when each student offered their personal game-changing experiences. Every school had informative displays and hands-on demonstrations that gave the passersby an enticing taste of what makes each school beneficial and unique. Along with presenting exciting STEM-related offerings, the arts were also on display. Musical performances at the mall's bustling food court and dramatic visual art exhibitions allowed shoppers to become absorbed in the multifaceted world of today's high schooler.
Welcome back and hope that you enjoyed our school board spotlight. So at this time during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and again, toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back to you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute limit. As you begin your comments, a green light comes on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, a red light in the beep indicates that your time is up. We ask that at that time you would wrap up your comments. So at this time, as you hear your name, please come forward, and we do have some cards today. The first card we have is Michelle Edwards. Would you please come forward? Hello?
Hello.
Absolutely. Floor's yours.
Okay. Well, my concern is I gave a folder in reference to my son Justin Edwards Jr. that was attending Discovery STEM last year, and my older son Austin Edwards attends also. He's in fourth grade. During the summertime, I was bringing up his medication to the school and then was notified that he no longer is enrolled in that school. I said, "Excuse me?" And then they brought it to my attention, at the bottom of the report card, it says what school they're going to be attending and the next grade. Well, who looks at that when their kindergarten is going to the next grade in the same school? So I was kind of concerned. She said, "Well, it was a district decision, district-wide, to remove all kids that are not part of the lottery, that are siblings of the lottery students." And I said, "Well, that's not acceptable. I mean, my son only knows STEM, and then you're going to put him in a regular public education environment, which is a completely different way of learning." That's why I was hoping Ms. Ms. Seroles was going to be here. That's why I was hoping Ms. Schulzlo was going to be here. But fortunately she's not. But my point is, I think it needs to be addressed because I've been trying to get him back into Discovery STEM Academy, and their excuses are there's no administrative transfers or room. And I addressed it with Ms. Pilger and also Ms. Kathy Demarek or something like that? I can't remember. And she had put in a request for Dr. Byrd, Executive Director of Elementary Leadership, to find out if there was room to transfer him on my transfer request. That was not my request. My request was to put him back where he actually was. And I think, I mean, if they're going to end the sibling program, they should have not, they should have notified the new lottery students coming this current year and ended that instead of removing children that were already established in the school. And remove them, I feel like that's a, I mean, neglect, that's wrong, you know? And he's, I mean, he's on the tag program, I mean, he's in the gifted program, he exceeded his, you know, testing scores. I mean, he's doing really good there where he is now removed and bored, doesn't want to do the work. This is not a justice to him, I don't think, or any of the other students that possibly were removed and not notified. There was no notification, nothing, just the bottom of a report card. That's just insane to me. And I think it needs to be addressed, and I would like my son to be placed back into at least an equivalent school, or if not, Discovery STEM. That's what I have to say, I guess. So that's it?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. April Kofield?
I am April Kofield, and I'm here to speak on kids in the special needs program. It's heartening. At one point in time, our kids get to an age when they realize that they're different from everyone else. A lot of times when they're at home, and they're with their friends, they're with friends, and everybody is average and normal. And when they go to school, they're secluded. It's like they're in a class where everybody else looks like them, but yet they see their friends. Like she'll see a friend that she plays with every day, and "Hi," or they're in the lunchroom, "Hi," and they can't go over and communicate with each other. So I was wondering, is there any way that we can implement, like a buddy system, or have it where a class can come in and eat lunch with our kids, or read to our kids so they can get to know our kids and know that they want the same things that they do, the average kids do? They have the same desires, they want to play the same games, and they want to do the same things. But when they are, when they are put aside and not included in some things, it brings in the notion that, yeah, I am different. And I just want to know if we could do something to that effect? Or in high school, the buddy system? Like we've had big brothers, big sisters. You can have the buddy system where kids that are interested in special needs programs or interested in teaching special needs programs can get credits for going into our classes and dealing with our kids to get to know them, to get, you know, what their disabilities are. You can ask these questions and feel free to ask them without feeling like you're offending the kid. Get to know what is wrong with our kids, get to talk to our kids, and figure out how, you know, people can just, you know, relax around our kids. Because our kids come up like, hey, I know my daughter does, she has Down syndrome. She's friendly. She walks up to everybody, "Hey, hey, hey." Even adults will not speak back. Some kids are staying off it because they have not been taught how to behave or how to respond to our kids. And I think it could happen in school where we can teach them how to respond to our kids. We can implement programs where they know, okay, yeah, they're different, but they're safe. They're not going to bite you, they're not going to kill you, they just want to be your friend, and they want to be accepted on the same level that we accept everybody else's kids. And that's all I have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marian Temple?
I've been a thorn in everyone's side for a while. I've sent multiple emails to the school board regarding my son and issues. I've met with Mr. Wright, Dr. Bennett, and today I spoke with his principal, who actually asked me, Dr. Mason asked me, why is he back at Ward High School? She wanted to know, why was he there? Why did I bring him back there? Because he's zoned here and he has a legal right to go here. Because I initially sent him the point option because of all the issues he had at Ward, but legally he has a right to go to Ward because that's his own school, and I shouldn't be questioned as to why I sent him back to his own school. She questioned me in a conversation. She wanted to know, why was he there? Why did I send him back there? Was it my choice or was it his choice? When I told her, "It's not my choice because I want no parts of Ward," she said, "Hmm, okay." So he's fine with it, right? No, he's 14. He doesn't know any better. So the issue, as I've emailed many people, my son was bullied by his baseball coach. I have, the emails began on March 14th where I notified the athletic director, Ms. Coach Nuttich, as well as Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Taylor, who's over, his coach is Austin Gibbons, and Mr. Taylor, who's over athletics, the assistant principal of athletics, where I let them know that my child suffers from anxiety and that he was coming home having panic attacks every day. I contacted the coach, let him know he has anxiety. How is your practice run? Why is he coming home with panic attacks every day? So the email outlined the entire conversation to make everyone known. From March until May, I had nothing but problems. My child was bullied. He was bullied by the coach as well as students. My son was in a locker room with three Caucasian students, called him a nigger and a monkey, and tried to jump him. He ran out of the locker room, pushed one out the way to get out the locker room. They were not attended after baseball practice. He ran onto the baseball field where the varsity players were playing, and my older son, who was a senior at the time, was on the field. And he let his older brother know what happened, and the baseball coach, varsity coach, said, "Oh, I'll handle that." Nothing was ever done. I contacted Mr. Taylor, who never even notified Dr. Mason of the incident at hand. I contacted Coach Nuttich, me and other parents, Mr. Taylor. We contacted multiple people over the entire season, and no one notified each other. So where I stand now is, I'm a thorn in everybody's side because I'm fighting for my child. But the problem is, my child should not have to suffer verbal abuse. I left education because I witnessed physical and verbal abuse of students. I reported it, and I was looked down on because a non-verbal autistic, a non-verbal student with autism could not speak up for himself. So he couldn't say that this happened to me. I regret it, but I left education because I could not take the abuse that I was seeing from teachers. And my issue now is, when do we hold them accountable for what's been going on? After all this happened, I notified Assistant Principals and Dr. Mason that my son suffers from depression and anxiety, and we have documentation. I was told that nothing is wrong with him because they see him smiling every day. Dr. Mason said, "Who are you to say that something is wrong with him? Are you a trained professional?" Well, yes, actually, I am. I'm a qualified mental health professional. I am trained. And the school ignored his issues. He was out of school for a month. Throughout this whole ordeal, Mr. Wright says he investigated. However, I'm being told I need to leave that in the past. I need to let it go. But this coach is still coaching, and my son wants to play baseball, so he has to go back to his abuser because it's verbal abuse.
Excuse me, Ms. to pull your times up? Could you just wrap it up?
So I'm left at, what? Where do I go from here? Do I need to withdraw my son? Go back to Virginia Beach where he was an honor roll student and had no issues? I don't know where to go from here. And I'm getting no assistance, no help. And it's like, I'm trying to seek legal counsel, but when does a child matter? When do we put the child first? Do I have to withdraw him? Can he not get an education in Newport News?
We have your card, and someone will follow up with you. Thank you very much.
But you told me that months ago when I saw you at lunch, you said you'd contact me and you never contacted me. When I saw you at lunch at the Point?
I recall.
Uh-huh, we sat in the booth next to each other. You said you would contact me because I had sent an email that day and I never heard from you.
You did hear from me.
No, never. No email, no phone call.
All right. Thank you very much.
So I'm being, okay.
Thank you very much.
So I'll just, tomorrow I'm going to withdraw him because I don't know what else to do. I don't know how that affects the school system, but I'm getting no assistance.
Miss, thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Barbara Futrell.
Hi, my name is Barbara Futrell, as all of you may know. I talked to you, and I didn't get anywhere, but I'm going to, like I said, I had a meeting with Mayor Price, and hopefully my son gets some justice. But when I'm sitting in here and I'm seeing one of the teachers getting a ward from you guys after what she's done to my son, I don't appreciate that at all. She's threatening my son, and she doesn't know she's on voicemail, and I've played it for too many people for her to be sitting in here getting a reward. How is that but a smack in my face? Or how is that for my son that's distraught and does not want to go to school? And I feel like this, if we don't know how to conduct ourselves as adults, how do we expect our kids to know how to conduct themselves? I sat here and watched the way you allowed him to address this woman. That was very rude to me, but that's just my opinion. We're all here as one. We say our best interest is for these kids, but one question for you, is it really? Because I don't know about her, but I know how, I know how to go with the law and get things done the right way. I've called the state, so I'm giving you an opportunity to hear me out. I would not write another letter. I wrote you a certified letter, and it got sent back to me, and I will send, I will bring it to you if you would like. But I have the post office backing me up, saying they sent it to your secretary, and she wouldn't take it or sign for it. So that letter that you're asking for, I've already done it, and I do want some justice for my son. My son has been abused mentally and physically. Now my youngest one is being abused because of his older brother. And I, as a parent, I'm not going to take that. I've came to address it appropriately. I've said the police, I've said security, and I have not done anything to anybody in this building. And all I wanted was to have a meeting with you. And the way I feel, the way they treat you is like President Obama. You're a superintendent to make sure your schools are being ran the right way. And for you to sit back and tell me a few minutes ago that that's not your job, you have other people to do that job for you, that's not correct at all.
Ms. Futrell?
My three minutes is not up. I'm actually timing myself.
I, at this time, we don't really attack individuals in our school system.
You feel like I'm attacking you? Please let me know.
No, it's just inappropriate conversation at the moment right now.
Well, if you would like this to be private, I don't mind making a date and time. I'll be there. That's all I wanted this whole time, was an appointment, which is my right when I read my yellow book, because I've read it. That's my right to have a meeting with you, especially when something so severe is going on in your school system. And that's all I'm asking for. My right or my rights violated? My rights have been violated, and I feel like that's my right to let you hear that. So that's all I'm asking for, is an appointment, and I don't want to deal with any one of these people up here. I would like to deal with you. I've been violated by every last one of them, and I don't want to deal with them anymore.
Mr. Chairman, just want to, sorry for the breach of protocol. Ms. Futrell has been asked to submit a letter letting me know exactly what she needs. She's met with several staff members. I'll be happy to meet with her if she can specify specifically what she wants from a meeting with my office. And I told her specifically, standing right there, I will move heaven and earth for her child if she can specify specifically what she needs me to do. And I will look forward to your letter.
That's fine. Would you like to hear the voicemail? Would you like to hear the voicemail?
Deliver it or drop it off right now. I'll be happy to.
Okay. Well, you will very soon. I'm talking to a reporter, so everybody will hear it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Dani Baysmore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. Our major concern continues to be the fact that Huntington Middle School will close its doors in June 2020 as things currently stand. We do not want to see this happen, and we are asking the board and the administration to take action to keep Huntington Middle School viable. We will continue to bring this matter before you because, as they say, pray until something happens. We're going to continue to ask you for your action while we pray. We never expected the delay by the city that we are now faced with. Therefore, we must return sixth graders to Huntington at Heritage in 2020 so that the school continues to operate until it is rebuilt. We know it's asking a lot, but it asks the community a lot to close the doors of the As I always say, Huntington Middle School shall rise again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Janes Brow.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Brother Parker, the school board. First of all, I'd just like to commend the teachers and the schools that received the awards this evening. I know that Virginia, Newport News especially, works very hard with what they have to improve our students. Every year, many of them go to top colleges and universities. That's because of the teaching that they have. We fought most of this year for them to get raises and so forth because we know they deserve it, and the evidence is in the awards and things they win on state levels, federal levels, or whatever level they are winning. So first of all, I want to commend the school board for supporting them and the hard work that you're doing in order that our teachers can do the work that they have to do. Secondly, I want to speak on the information that was given to us about two weeks ago about the conditions of our schools. I know over a period of time, you guys have been asking the city for funding to increase and to improve various things and items in our schools. And now it's gotten to the point where, again, this year, you ask for $50 million, and they want to give you $37 million. I'd just like to know from the city, and I'm not at the city, but I want you guys to continue to put pressure on the city that they live up to the expectations that the citizens have and the school board is putting for them. We're not going to compromise, and we don't want you to compromise. We need this school. If it takes $50 million to build it and to furnish it, that's what we want. The other thing is that $2.8 million that was allocated at one point or suggested two years ago, we still haven't gotten that. So how can they give you the $37 million and haven't given you the money for the plans yet? And we don't want to wait for them to design a plan. They put it off and put it off and put it off. Systematically, they're putting it off again. And like Janie said, these kids need to be back in Huntington now. I found out this evening that the Scott Center takes these kids in after school, after-school program, it feeds them, and they also can study their homework and stuff. These kids need every advantage that they can get, and they're not getting it where they are now. The city has to pay for those buses. Why don't they just put them back where they were? Why can't we do that? That would save the city some money, plus it would benefit the children. And their parents can get over to see their children when they have problems and issues. So I'm asking you guys to do everything that you can. 2020, to reopen Huntington so the kids can be there, and we're standing behind you on the money. Don't let them keep on putting it off and putting it off and putting it off, because I believe what they're trying to do is to wait you out and the school don't get built. We don't need a campus there, we need a school there, possibly the Scott Center that works coincides with the school. But other than that, we don't need a campus. They haven't even done their drawings yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lavon Futrell?
Lavon Futrell? Thank you already.
That's a different name. Yeah. Ms. Lavon Futrell? Yes, she's gone? Okay. Ms. Pam Hall?
Good evening. Ms. Pam Hall, and I'm here to speak on Huntington Middle School. I appreciate you guys' support in trying to get the school built, but like Reverend Brown says, we cannot delay any longer. And we would like to keep the students at Heritage. I know it's not ideal, but out of sight, out of mind. And once they're gone, then they'll move to another school because they will not be a priority. And we need Huntington to be a priority because we need that school in our community. And the other schools are already overcrowded. The teachers are complaining and the students are complaining. So why put the teachers and the students in that situation? Some of the teachers may even want to leave to get better classrooms or smaller sizes. So we would like for you to continue to push the city to get this done now, and we want it to be a STEAM Academy so that we can bring back some of our Huntington alumni members who are in the acting field. And maybe I can get Chad with Bozeman to come. So we look forward to having Huntington reopen real soon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, I will move the agenda. Next, we have our consent agenda. Item number 3.01, minutes from our regular meeting, August 20th, 2019. 3.02, our special meeting, August 20, 2019. 3.03, a minute from our work session meeting, August 20, 2019. 3.04, financial reports, revenue reports, June and August, 2019. Expense reports, June and August, 2019. Child nutrition reports, June, 2019. 3.05, personnel report. 3.06, we have an amendment. Amend the 2019-2020 school board calendar to omit our October 4th school board retreat. 3.07, student board norms and protocols that were a part of your package. 3.08, the easement requests from Dominion Power at Deer Park Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the robe.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. We'll move the agenda to our action items. We have one action item tonight. For opponent one, proposal for Newport News Education Foundation Employee Partnership. Here to give us a short presentation, Mr. John Schefflett, who is the chair of the Newport News Education Foundation. Mr. Schefflett, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, the school board members, Dr. Parker. I appreciate you taking time to listen to us and consider our proposal. I'd like to also recognize that Dr. Robin Nell Hubel is here as the president-elect from the foundation, and Rhonda Bell, who is a former teacher and she's the current educator with the Jefferson Lab. So we have some other representatives with us this evening. And I would say that, I need to figure out how to work this thing. The, there we go. Our programs are well-known, even if the foundation is not well-known. The LETS scholars that we graduate each year, the ones that we have receive a scholarship for $10,000 that's paid out over four years. And those graduating seniors come back and become teachers after they finish their college in Newport News Public Schools. Here in this picture, you see Brianna Spitzer. She's our 2019 LETS Scholar. And I have to tell you, I was on the board that interviewed her and selected her. She is a truly impressive young lady. She's already teaching in the schools as a volunteer, and she is going to be a wonderful addition to the schools in four years. Also, the annual salute to success banquet that you see represented up here, the folks that you see in that picture represent our valedictorians, salutatorians, national merit scholars, and those who have received four or more industry certifications preparing them for a career. These are already people who are ready to succeed as citizens, college-ready, and career-ready. So we're helping create that vision and make that vision come to life. The teacher innovation mini-grants that you see down on the bottom corner, each year we work to provide money for the mini-grants to the teachers, and they bring new and innovative ideas into the classroom and for their students. Each year also, the mini-grants requests are about twice what we're able to fund. And each year, we're able to fund about half of the requests, not at the full value that we have because we need to be better at fundraising, better at being able to meet these needs. And the last program, which is more recent, and I hope that you're familiar with this, we know that building strong collaborations is really the root of meeting the needs of our students and the teachers. Our collaboration with Thomas Nelson Community College in the Peninsula Chamber enabled us to win a $50,000 grant from Newport News Shipbuilding to build a career leadership program based on welding craft certifications and leadership development taught at the chamber. And these students will graduate from this program not only ready to weld in the world, which is quite a good job, by the way, it is also enabling them to be able to lead, to lead work crews, to be good citizens, and lead in our community. The companies that you see represented on this slide are the, and the educators you see here are the collaborators that make up the Newport News Education Foundation. Our mission is to support Newport News Public Schools and the interests of the Hampton Roads business community. We believe that nothing affects our community's economic well-being and progress more than creating a future community leaders and a well-dynamically skilled workforce. So as we began last December to consider strategically, where do we need to go as a foundation? We examined our own progress and we looked at what were the requirements on the schools for the future and what were the progress and success of our existing programs. We considered the issues faced by the schools in funding, the projected profile of graduate requirements, the internships, the work experiences for each graduate. And we saw the need to expand existing programs, like the career development program I just talked about, and for new programs to meet some of these emerging needs and the education requirements for graduates and their real-world needs when they come to go to work. All of them go to work eventually. Even in creating the modes that we could support, we were fast shining a light on the fact that in order to be successful at meeting these needs that you see up on the screen and the ones that you'll see on the next screen, we had to have boots on the ground. We are operating as a group of citizens who are fully employed in other jobs, and those ad hoc committees just have a really difficult time getting things done. We get them done through other people and through collaborations, but in order to really be successful and really help our kids, we recognized that we needed to put boots on the ground. So even though you saw our members talking to the press, you saw us talking to the city council about school funding, you saw us generating new funding for career programs and new opportunities for the students, it's not enough. And we want to push forward and believe we can push forward. And hence, our proposal for a partnership with the school board and Newport News Public Schools. And our proposal highlights the opportunity and the rationale that we believe this position should be staffed. The primary objectives for the position focus on creating sustainable funding streams that both pay for the position, that's an important piece, that it both pays for the position, and it expands these programs we've been talking about and discovers the new opportunities that are out there. The proposal that you've received in your board docs also includes a formal job description and a memorandum of understanding between the foundation and the school board. The MOU requests a funding partnership with the school board, Newport News Public Schools, and the foundation, and an agreement to proceed with employing the person to focus on the strategic direction you saw in the last slide and the objectives that you see here. In concert with members of the foundation and other support partners, we have secured partial funding for this, and we are looking to be partnering with you as well. The MOU also states, and I think this is important as well, that the director is jointly funded and will only need partial funding in the first year, and the funding need will be gone by the end of the fourth year. Honestly, we believe it will be gone by the end of the second year, but we are projecting the end of the fourth year. It's important, we recognize, to get the right person in this job in a similar position in York County. When they found the right person in the job, they were able to generate more than $375,000 in funding inside of the first year, which both paid for the job, paid for expanded programs, and it also allowed for them to have some endowed funding for some continuing programs that we seek, just like the programs like the LETS Scholarship, to have that endowed so it continues in perpetuity. And lastly, I wanted to express that the MOU also notes that it is a dual responsibility, dual accountability role. It is reporting to the superintendent's office as well as to the foundation board, and the evaluation is conducted by the superintendent's office as well as by the foundation board. We expect this position to report out at each foundation meeting, the progress they're having, the issues that they're facing. And we encourage members of the school board here to come and join us at the foundation meetings and draw a closer bond between our two units, but also to hear firsthand, what is this job doing? What's it getting done for us? How much progress are we making? And what are the next steps? The foundation requests your consideration and approval for our proposal and the MOU to allow us to proceed as quickly as possible with liaison director for the Newport News Public Schools. Thank you, and thanks to the schools for collaborating and putting together the right information in this MOU and proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Ely.
I just want to, first of all, say thank you for your amazing presentation that you did and the update and let us know all what you, with the foundation that's doing for our school. We definitely appreciate the scholarship funds through the LETS, and so many kids through Newport News appreciate that. And just want to say thank you and continue doing the great work you and your team is doing for the students across the city of Newport News.
Thank you. Thank you. We enjoy doing what we're doing. We think it's important work.
Mr. Brown.
I have several questions, but first, I also want to say a personal thank you. I sincerely appreciated the advocacy that you all showed during the last budget cycle. It was personally very encouraging to know that there are people in the business community that do care about our schools and care about education. So that was personally very encouraging. I have a couple of questions, but the first one, just overall, is in terms of our legal council has looked at the memorandum of understanding. I understand that we are not, by far, not the first school division to take on this kind of arrangement, but in terms of the way it's constructed, are there any concerns or issues in terms of the memorandum of understanding?
Lynn and I have both looked at this, and I don't believe that there were any issues that were, that we had concerns about.
And then the other question, questions were, I see that the position itself would be a Newport News Public School employee, and it does, I mentioned, evaluated by the superintendent and as well by the foundation. In the event that the superintendent and the foundation do not agree, one says that they're doing a poor job, the other one says they're doing a fine job. How is that kind of conflict to be resolved?
Well, how is that kind of conflict to be resolved? Number one, the first piece that we need to do is a piece of work after the next step, and that is to design the objectives template. In other words, what is the position supposed to do? What is the progress supposed, they're supposed to make? What are the results they're supposed to bring in? Then it becomes pretty much digital. Did you do it or did you not? And that becomes the indicator, are we meeting the goals or are we not? That becomes our interview template as well so that we know that we select the right person. And then when we get to the end-of-the-year evaluation or even a mid-year evaluation, there are no surprises. We are in lockstep, being able to look at, are they making progress? Are they doing what they said they were going to do? Are they meeting the results standard that we have set? You know, so I don't think that we will foresee an issue like that because we're working together in lockstep all along. There's not a disjointed piece here.
And then going forward, once the position is fully funded by the Education Foundation, would this person become an employee of the Education Foundation or the vision is that they would continue to be an employee of Newport News Public Schools?
Currently, the vision is, is that they would continue to be an employee of Newport News Public Schools funded by the Education Foundation, primarily because it would be not cost prohibitive, but it would be not a wise use of expenses to duplicate a structure that already exists in the Newport News Public Schools. So we thought it would be more cost-efficient and more effective overall to be able to have that maintained in that foundation structure with us and the Newport News Public Schools in partnership and with the administrative arm of the Newport News Public Schools carrying out those pieces of the function.
Okay. And then my last question would just be around for the general public that doesn't understand the unique relationship that Education Foundation has with Newport News Public Schools. Some will criticize you all being a 501(c)(3). Why partner with you as opposed to any other children's charity around? And if you could speak to the unique relationship that we have?
John's view is that, first off, we work for Newport News Public Schools. You know, we are a 501(c)(3). Our entirety of existence is focused on how do we advance the schools? How do we advance the purpose of the schools? How do we advance funding of the schools? There's not another set of issues that we're focused on. We are focused purely on how do the schools work? How can we help them? How can we help fund them? How can we bring more efficiency? How can we bring expertise that helps? How can we bring partnerships that help? How can we bring collaboration that helps? If another organization comes to you and meets that standard, I would encourage you to find ways to support them because they're going to do you well. That's John's view. I haven't polled the Education Foundation to see how they'd respond to that, but that's John's view.
Dr. Best.
I'd like to thank you for your presentation as well and for your support of Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you.
My question is, do you already have in the back of your mind, or have you already thought of some preliminary figures as far as fundraising? Or is that solely based on possibly who you may be hiring and like, what kind of person do you envision in this position?
Well, to the first couple of questions you asked, the answer is yes. We have had some discussions about that. Existing programs that you saw up on the board, those are programs that have a need for funding on an annual basis. The career development program that is there has funding that will begin to wane away after year two, so we will need to find a way to support that and replace that funding. And we have the need and the desire to expand the funding that goes into teacher mini-grants. Our target on that was that we would really like to be able to double that, at least double that, so that we could meet the needs of all of the teachers who are submitting a proposal. So what that immediately takes you to is the need for around $100,000 in funding. And if you get the right person in those fundraising positions, the polling that we've done of the foundation executive directors, their liaison directors, their PR directors, and the money that they are able to bring in there, it's typically been in the $300,000-plus range. So we felt confident that would give us the ability to build on this career development program because we've seen the model before. The model works. We know it works. The schools know it works. And we believe that we could expand on that. That's one avenue. And frankly, there's the school funding that has some needs as well, and perhaps we could supply some there. So we're optimistically looking that we can fix funding for the programs we currently have, and we can expand into some of these areas and be more supportive in other ways. Did that answer your program? Did that answer your program?
Yes. What kind of person are you looking for? With what kind of background or did you have something in mind?
We have looked at a number of different types of people and the job description's fairly generic as, as you see, but we believe that the type of person that we're looking for is an experienced development person. If you think of college fundraising, if you think of foundation fundraising, if you think of the Fine Arts Center fundraising, the, the Symphony, the, the Foundation for the Arts in Richmond, that type of person who is responsible for development in those venues carries with them the, some network, they carry with them also some ability and knowledge as to how do you access companies that have funding streams that would be available and individuals who have funding streams that they would be willing to support the right source. And they have a background and experience for how do they fare it through that quickly enough to be able to come to solutions on what can we do to establish sustainable funding in the long, long term? So that's the kind of person we think we're looking for.
And just one more. And the salary you have in mind, you think would draw that kind of person with that experience?
Based on the research, yes. And the research being a, a market study for what does this type of person draw in terms of a salary and what are comparable salaries that we've seen in education liaison directors, education foundation directors and that type of position in other areas around us? We do believe that it would draw. And some of our board members have been contacted by several people saying, I understand you're looking at this. Let me tell you what I think. And those are people who currently sit in those roles. I can't tell you that I know that they're the right person or not because I haven't talked to them. I don't know. But yeah, there's, there's sort of two data sets, the formal one and the informal one. And they both seem to resonate together. So we think that, we think that we're in the right ballpark and the HR department at Newport News Public Schools has taken a look at it and put what they thought was a price on it. And we're comfortable that we think that all of that data aligns and tells us pretty clearly where we should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris.
Hey, John, thank you for your, for your comments.
Yes, sir.
I'm more concerned about the advocacy part, which I know you're gonna do. We talked about this many years before. Because the fifth meter target for me right now is the city council. Scholarships are great, supporting our kids are great, but for the overall success and health and welfare of this school division, just me, Marvin Harris speaking, my fifth meter target is the city council and, and, and the concept in which they are using, you know, to support public schools.
Right.
Being a 501(c)(3), there's only so far you can go in your advocacy work. We know you can't support political candidates or organizations. In your opinion, based on the board that you have now, how effective do you think you can become or will be in transforming some of our leadership? Not transforming, which means not to remove, but a change of mind on supporting public school systems or Newport News Public Schools.
Okay. That's tough. How can you predict the way the city council's going to go?
I predict, you know, I know, I know it's a tough person.
Forgive me for making light of it. But yeah, I, I think it's an important question. And, and to your point, the, the foundation as itself, with an employee of the foundation, really, its position has a, has a boundary and we need to operate within, within that boundary. However, I would tell you that I think that the, the city council members that we've talked to, and we've talked to almost all of the city council members, I think that we've had, we've made an impression on them. Does that sway their vote this year? I don't know. Does it sway it in the next year? I don't know. But we keep going back and the one thing that I have told them is that we've, we've sat on the sidelines and been quiet for many years. We're becoming more vocal. We're going to be more visible. You will see us again. And they did. They saw us again. And we've been down and spoken with them privately. We've spoken with them publicly. And I think that those who are inclined to consider what is appropriate funding for the public schools are swayed by reason and data and arguments that make sense.
Right.
And I think those who are disinclined to listen to those arguments, I'm not sure how much progress we'll make with them in the near term. Is that fair?
Oh, no, it's very fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I thank you, John, for the wonderful report.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
So at this time, we have a proposal on the floor from the Newport News Education Foundation and that they seek approval for the proposal that was just presented. Do we have a motion for approval of such proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval.
You heard the motion in a second.
A second.
You heard the motion in a second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much, Mr., thank you very much. I look forward to this particular partnership with the Newport News Education Foundation. I think it's something that we left out there, been sitting on the sidelines, as you said, for many years. I, I do, I, I'm in fundraising myself, so I understand.
But he can't, he can't work. He's a board member. He can't work there.
He's pretty, he's pretty good. He's pretty good.
That's what I'm worried about.
No. Mr. John, I've been asked that question by both of these schools and I've told them absolutely positively no. But you know, any way I can assist in finding that proper person or anyone, any one of our board members that can also assist. And we look forward as the whole board possibly joining you, maybe possibly at our next board meeting. I think I've got a nod to our head and then we'll do some rotation from this point on forward. So we're looking like it's going to be a phenomenal and great partnership. So thanks again for the presentation and we look forward to the partnership.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you, board, for that approval. Okay, we're going to move to reports and information. 5.01, we're going to have, we're, we're right, okay? We're good? All right. All right, so we're moved to our reports and, and we're going to have a brief overview of the Newport News Public Schools technical plans. And I think we'll have Mr. Chris Jenkins, our Director of Technology, to come give us a overview. Hello, Chris.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, members of the board, Dr. Parker. A copy of the 2019-2020 educational technology plan's been uploaded to Board Docs for your review. And I appreciate the opportunity tonight to speak to you and provide you just a brief overview of what's in the plan. In addition to sharing some of our high level goals, I'll be telling you about the development and design of our plan and the process that we use to gather input and feedback to identify the technology needs in the district. Before I jump into the plan, I think it's important that we start with the why. Why do we need a plan? Personally, I think that technology can be a great equalizer. It can level the playing field for all students regardless of their abilities, their socioeconomic status, or the zip code they live in. We believe that all students deserve equitable access to devices and digital resources, but it takes more than just access. In order for, in order to be truly transformational, the technology has to be seamlessly integrated into the learning. And that begins with personalized and aligned professional development to build capacity of teachers. It also takes a rigorous technology-enriched curriculum. This plan will act as a framework as we work collaboratively to support and transform learning at Newport News Public Schools through the use of technology. The design and layout of the plan is intended to make it easy for the reader to make the connection between our needs that are identified, our goals and objectives, and our strategies. For each need identified, one or more goal has been established and then multiple strategies have been identified or have been developed to accomplish each goal and objective. We gathered a lot of information in the process of putting this fan, putting this plan together. In all, more than 1,000 NMPS employees, 4,000 students, and 900 families provided information that helped us develop the plan. The majority of information that we received came through a comprehensive online survey conducted in April. The survey covered all aspects of technology and learning at NMPS and the data collected was a key component in our needs analysis for the plan. In addition to the survey, district leadership participated in a readiness assessment from future-ready schools and we hosted a technology summit to invite additional feedback from educators and leaders in the district. Through this process, we've developed five high-level needs and they are personalized and aligned professional development to build the capacity of our teachers, enhancement of teaching and learning through the use of technology, continuous improvements and vigilance in creating safe and secure learning environments for our staff and students, providing timely, accurate, and relevant information, and fostering a data-driven culture, and lastly, maintaining a robust technology infrastructure that is capable of connecting it all together. Our first goal is to allow more personalization in our professional learning. Educators have indicated that they would like more choice in the topic of their PD. Multimedia skills, classroom management tools, and digital citizenship skills have been identified as their top three preferred topics for learning. As a result, we've added targeted learning in these areas in this technology plan. Additionally, educators have expressed a desire to have an increased choice in the way that their PD is delivered. We've collaborated with instructional supervisors to develop online learning sessions for teachers in several content areas. PD in Your PJs was offered to all secondary English teachers beginning in August of this year. Allowing teachers to complete their PD online gave them more time during the busy pre-service week to focus on preparing for the return of our students. The feedback from teachers thus far has been overwhelmingly positive and our plan moving forward is to work with the CND team to provide similar offerings in additional content areas. For the 1920 school year, we've hired two additional instructional technology coaches. These ITCs play a critical role in helping our teachers integrate technology in meaningful and authentic ways. In response to feedback from school leaders, our ITCs will be sharing guidelines, tips, and look fours to help administrators evaluate the effective use of technology in their buildings. Much of what we do in technology revolves around supporting, enhancing, teaching, and learning. So this is one of the central focuses of the technology plan. Access to devices and online resources were common themes in our planning process. Teachers at NMPS have access to a wide variety of tools and digital resources. While we always stay focused on new and emerging technologies, it's also important that we increase awareness about the tools that are already available. One way we accomplish this is through a digital toolbox. This is a curated and searchable collection of online educational resources that have been vetted by ITCs and instructional staff. As part of the technology plan, we will be connecting additional resources to this toolbox that focus on the development of multimedia skills, critical thinking, and digital citizenship skills. Another common theme during the technology summit was the need for a more cohesive integration of technology in the curriculum. The technology department will partner with curriculum and development to formalize procedures to ensure that ITCs are invited to participate collaboratively in the curriculum writing process. We will also work with CND to move the NMPS curriculum to a more online-friendly platform that will allow for easier integration with Google Classroom and our Chromebooks. Dr. Parker has asked that we develop a five-year digital conversion plan. When we talk about a digital conversion, the goal is to close the digital use divide. So years ago, when our student-to-computer ratio was over five to one, we talked a lot about the digital divide, the students that have devices and the students that don't have devices. We've made a tremendous progress at NMPS and our overall average student-to-computer ratio is 1.1 to one. It's important to note that this ratio includes all student computers and we still have some work to do in replacing our student desktops with Chromebooks. And we also need to reallocate some of our resources more equitably amongst our buildings. With that tackled, our next challenge is to focus on what the students are doing with the devices. Are the students passively consuming content or are they creators of content? That is what the digital divide is all about. So beyond, beyond just the devices, a digital conversion requires a holistic approach. The professional development for teachers, access to online textbooks and resources, and a technology-enriched curriculum are key components of a successful digital conversion. I think we'll all agree that safety and security of our staff and students and families is always at the front of our minds and we continue to invest in protecting our, our staff and families and students. During the back-to-school report, you were informed about a new initiative that we're introducing, a new app that will allow our students to anonymously report bullying. I also spoke to you about our new visitor, or actually, Michelle spoke to you about our visitor and volunteer management system. So we've engaged with this same company, their name is Raptor, to provide a comprehensive emergency management system. So this is a centrally managed system that will simplify our drill scheduling and tracking. It'll allow us to instantly alert first responders and staff of incidents. And when an incident occurs, it will expedite the process of reuniting our students with their families. Video cameras are another crucial component of our safety and security program. We have over 1,200 cameras in the district in and around our school administrative buildings. And this year, we're going to continue to improve our coverage by adding more cameras at some of our elementary schools. And lastly, we've implemented a new email filtering, filtering and security service that's going to increase our capabilities related to detecting and eliminating email-borne threats like spam, phishing, and other malicious content. Several objectives in our plan revolve around empowering our teachers, administrators, and decision-makers with timely, accurate, and relevant data. Implementation of our, of the new synergy analytics module will give us the ability to design, develop, deploy, and maintain custom reports and visual dashboards. Because it's fully integrated with our existing Synergy Sys system, users will have access to their data dashboards in real time using a single sign-on. Working with our data analytics team, we'll use the synergy analytics module to develop role-based dashboards for central office and school-based administrators. For example, a principal's dashboard might contain information related to attendance, chronic absenteeism, discipline, or performance on benchmarks. To ensure that data and reports we share are completely accurate, the Sys and Data Warehouse team will continue to develop as well as improve existing data quality assurance reports. These custom reports are designed to identify data entry errors and anomalies before they show up on any of our, on any of our public reports. Additionally, to monitor our progress in, in addressing the needs of the technology plan, we'll continue to gather input and feedback from our staff, students, and families through a semi-annual technology and learning survey. Year-over-year data gathered will allow us to measure our performance against the baseline that we established with this year's survey in preparation for this tech plan. Because almost everything in the plan depends on technology, services, and connectivity, it's more important than ever that we maintain a robust network infrastructure. Our backup network operations center that was previously housed at City Hall has been moved to the plant services building at the New Scott Center. We are replacing some of our rack-mounted UPS systems that protect the power to our network equipment with modern, new modern systems that contain robust lithium-ion batteries. Some of the units we're replacing are over 10 years old, so this is an important step in ensuring our, the reliability of our network. We're also revamping our disaster recovery plan this year to provide more detail and it's also going to include some actionable, we call them playbooks. They're designed to prepare our staff to manage a wide variety of events and emergencies. And lastly, we have to make sure that we have adequate bandwidth to support our mission. Improvements in our network monitoring capabilities will allow us to more closely measure and report on our internet bandwidth utilization. The data we collect will allow us to make informed decisions about when, when it becomes necessary to increase our internet bandwidth. necessary to increase our internet bandwidth. Now that we have a plan, the next step is to actually implement it. We will first be sharing the plan on our technology page, which is off of the main school board website, and as I indicated, we've also uploaded a copy to Board Docs. We will work closely with Dr. Parker and senior staff to identify who is responsible, accountable, involved with each one of the objectives and strategies that we've laid out in the plan. We will be forming planning and steering committees that will guide our work this year, as well as helping us develop a 2020 to 2025 long-term technology plan. And progress is already being made in completing some of these objectives, so we will be updating this plan on a monthly basis, and we encourage folks to check back to the online version of the plan to follow our progress. And lastly, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Gore.
Hello. Thank you for the presentation. Just one question. Considering that technology tends to be a problem with students, of course, you're stating that the problem is making sure that these students obtain the information. What do you plan to do in order to keep kids focused on the topics that are talking class?
I think that's a great question, and I think maybe some of my colleagues, Dr. Paul and Tracy Brooks are going to be able to answer that as well as Dr. Parker.
So you can just put the technology in the classroom with no training, and it's just technology in a classroom?
Yes.
Or you can prepare teachers to teach in a blended learning environment where they're using the technology to enhance the instruction and access to students' to-real-world experiences and to make broader connections to curriculum. So that's what we have to do in order to, when we say we're really looking at a digital conversion, that's just educational language to say, we're going to make sure that we build the capacity of our teachers, not only to teach in a blended format where they can use the technology to enhance the curriculum. So an English class is still an English class, and there's still objectives that students have to learn, but there's a whole world of broader experiences, and the products that students create can be much different if they bring in media and real-world experiences and those things. So that's the capacity-building piece. The other piece is getting the students used to that environment, because not only do the teachers have to change their method of thinking around technology use and instruction, students also have to acclimate themselves to how to work in a blended learning environment. They'll be more engaged. We look for more ways to engage them, to improve opportunities for personalized learning and increase student choice, and what type of activities they would like to pursue. So that's where that conversion piece takes place. So I hope I answered your question, but that's really the work of a digital conversion. It's not just putting devices in a classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you. Great technology plan, and looking through the plan, it appears to be a good roadmap of where we want to go in the future. What would your estimations be on how long it's going to take to fulfill all of the steps on this roadmap? Because it's a fairly ambitious plan.
So the items that are covered in this, this is a one-year plan, so we will accomplish everything in the plan by June of next year, as well as start working on our long-term plan, which will be aligned to our NMPS profile of a graduate and our strategic plan that Dr. Paul and Ms. Brooks are going to present to you in just a moment.
And one of the other things that was mentioned in the presentation, the online courses, what's the, can you give a little more detail about what is the thought process about around the online courses? And are they going to, are we expanding what we currently have with learning modules that we have, or is it a new capability in terms of online courses?
I think it's actually both. So a couple of the things that we're looking at, we currently have about 6,000-plus students that are taking their finance class through our Desire to Learn learning management system, and that's an online course. It's provided through our partnership with WHRO. And also, at Heritage High School, we're piloting a program with Edgenuity, which is an online learning platform. We've purchased a site license for that school, and Mrs. Gerald and her team are doing some exciting work around getting students involved in some, as Dr. Parker mentioned, more of a blended learning, where they're still in the classroom, but some elements of the class are taking place online.
Wonderful, exciting. And then last question would just be around digital access, the digital divide in the home. Is there any plans to do some type of survey of the students and determine which students have Wi-Fi access at home, digital access at home?
Yes, so the survey that we did, the survey that we conducted in April, we found that 94% of our students reporting having access to Wi-Fi and internet at home. And then we have some existing partnerships. The first is with Sprint through their 1 million program, where we're able to provide no-cost internet to some of our high school students. Unfortunately, that program is only 9 through 12. We're looking at similar programs with T-Mobile, although their plan allows for all grade levels. And then we continue our partnership with Cox that was discussed at the New Teacher Breakfast with the Connect to Compete Program, which is not a no-cost program, but it's a very low-cost program that's also an option for some of those families.
94%, that's really, that's very good news, very exciting. And so just along with that, in the coming years, kinds of plans to bring more of the online learning, especially at the high school level, maybe to start with providing laptops and notebooks to high school students for them to do work both at home and at school doing that online blended learning?
So the five-year, the digital conversion plan that Dr. Parker has asked us to create would put a Chromebook in the hands of every secondary student by the end of 2023, and part of that work would be aligned to the work that Dr. Paul's going to speak to you about, the NMPS profile of a graduate, and the kinds of material that they cover will actually be determined through the, you know, in partnership with the instructional folks.
Very exciting time. So, and the last question would just be about the learning management system, as I understand that that's through the reports that have gotten, that that's really kind of the underlying system that needs to merge everything together. Will you be coming back to share a report on the learning management system and the alternatives that you've looked at?
Yes, I will. So part of the plan is that we're going to actually do a solicitation, we're going to do a request for information. That's a first step. It's a non-binding way for us to get information from different vendors about what they have to offer, and then that digital conversion committee, as well as the technology steering committee, will have an option to review that information and help us make that decision about how best to move forward.
All right. It's a big year coming up. All right.
Quick question.
I know we have the hotline where we call in for us bullying, but do we have the hotline? Is it used as well to call in, like if kids have concerns about other things that's going on, like if they see a kid got jumped, or if they saw somebody smoke a weed behind the bathroom, or anything like that? Can we use the hotline for that as well?
So the existing hotline, yes, they can use it for anything. The new system is, we're calling it, it is, the primary purpose of it is to prevent and report bullying, but it's actually a tip line where students can call, text, email, or go through a website, and they can submit information about bullying or any of the examples that you just shared.
Do we market it as a hotline for everything? Because I get somebody, you know, as a school, I get somebody emails or texts, which is, I've seen this, I would call the hotline, and the hotline is just for bullying. So I think it would be an idea if we marketed for, if you see anything, anything's going on.
I don't necessarily know if that's the purpose of this line, because it's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, our, the school staff who review this are primarily looking to support mental health awareness and students who are in some level of bullying or harassment.
So you're talking about the current hotlines?
Yeah, the folks who are monitoring.
The folks that are monitoring the existing phone lines, yes, their primary concern is with the social.
We would probably need to, just need to investigate, what were we doing for tip lines? Criminal activity and those kind of things.
Or anything a kid may witness or may feel uncomfortable with that's go beyond the parameters of just bullying or mental health, because we live in the age nowadays, kids deal with so much, and sometimes they don't have that. They want to talk, but they don't know who to talk to. So you can have that separate line where people could call in, like we got 411 for information, or 731, to get information. We have that separate line where kids could call, just besides the measures of just bullying or mental health, they can talk to someone about their concerns.
Yes, absolutely.
We will come back, we'll come back with what we're communicating with schools in terms of anonymous tips and how we handle that through, for student reporting. We'll come back and share that. Next month is Bullying Awareness Month, so we're definitely focused on using this app to broaden our parent-student engagement around that app, the use of that app, for those type of reasons. We'll also look at how we're reporting criminal activity or anonymous tips and how that's being handled, because sometimes who it's going to is as important as the actual reporting. So we want to make sure we're making sure the right information gets to the right people in a timely manner.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Sure, I got one, last but not least. Recovery data and disaster and backup data, is that cloud-based or is it rack-based?
So right now, the majority of our data is backed up in two separate systems. We have, so having the two network operations center, the data is backed up in both places so that we, right now, we don't have to rely on a cloud service for the backup, but that is certainly, as everything migrates to the cloud, that is certainly something we're looking at. We just want to be cautious, because with the cloud come the security and privacy concerns about who else has access to your information, but right now, we're very well-positioned with the ability to back up and restore any of our data.
Yeah, but I mean, it's also known that they steal more data from, you know, operational base as well as cloud-based, pretty much, right? I mean, what's the percentage?
Well, I think the difference is, right now, the data is within our control, it's behind our firewall, our firewalls, so we're not putting that out there. But I think cloud is the way that everything is going, and I think it does present us with some opportunities for better data recovery.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that report. Great report. Next, we have 5.02, the Cyber STEAM report. Ms. Tammy Byron will give us a report. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. I just want to say that I'm really honored to be part of a leadership team that values STEM and innovation, and this evening, I would like to share with you an overview of our newest STEM program focused on developing cybersecurity pathways for our military-connected With cybersecurity becoming one of the world's fastest-growing STEM fields, Newport News Public Schools seeks to create a pathway for military-connected students into cybersecurity careers. In September of 2018, NMPS was awarded a $1 million grant over five years from the Department of Defense Education Activity to create a cybersecurity pathway, starting with our youngest learners in pre-K at Demburely Childhood Center through 8th grade at two of our military-connected middle schools. Now, one does not typically think of pre-K, elementary, or even middle-school students when referencing cybersecurity, and it's with this in mind that during the 2018-19 grant planning year, a project steering committee was formed, and the development of an entry cybersecurity program called Cyber STEAM emerged. Problem-solving, computational thinking, and digital literacy are the foundational skills for future jobs in cybersecurity. Cyber STEAM is designed to develop these skills by integrating science, technology, engineering, arts, and math across the curriculum. Cyber STEAM is not a class, it is a method of instruction that will be embedded into existing NMPS courses. Students intending a Cyber STEAM school will gain access to new technologies, an after-school club, online curriculum resources, and an invitation to attend a summer camp for select To accomplish our goals, the funding has been allocated to support professional development for teachers, to include a grant-funded instructional STEM specialist position, and that is a 12-month position, purchase technology such as iPads and robots, provide consumable materials to classrooms for hands-on learning, and to integrate online curriculum to support digital literacy. Performance indicators outlined in the grant include both qualitative and quantitative Increases in teacher expertise and desired student outcomes will be measured through the utilization of focus groups, surveys, classroom walkthroughs, technology tracking, coaching logs, and most importantly, by examining our student work. The desired quantitative outcomes by the grant's conclusion in the year 2023 is for military-connected students' mean score on the computation and estimation and the expressions and operation strands of the Virginia Mass Standards of Learning assessments to increase by 10%. This school year is the first year of the cyber grant implementation. We know that innovative teaching and learning begins with the classroom teacher. Therefore, this year will be focused on teachers as learners. 177 teachers will participate in online training, face-to-face workshops, and job-embedded coaching as part of Cyber STEAM. As a result of this training, students will engage in seven different STEAM lessons utilizing up to 31 different technologies as instructional tools. Additionally, students will have the opportunity to participate in a STEAM club, which will be established at each Cyber STEAM elementary and middle school. The Cyber STEAM project has potential future implications to inform the redesign of our elementary and middle school curriculum to include the intentional integration of computer science standards. It is with that goal in mind that students at our seven participating schools, both military and non-military connected alike, will participate in Cyber STEAM. And I would like to conclude by sharing highlights from our Cyber STEAM summer camp that was featured by WTKR, News Channel 3. But if I could just pause for one second, I did want to share a connection to our earlier presentation. One of the Cyber STEAM lead teachers at one of the seven schools was a LET scholar, and she is now back leading this program at one of our schools. So that's a really interesting share.
Four-day camp experience all about coding, robotics, and a game-based cybersecurity curriculum is wrapping up for the summer, but good news for all of the young tech whiz is out there. The program will be introduced to seven Newport News public schools this fall, and it's staying for at least the next four years.
It's just wrapping their mind around the idea of building computational thinking and the ability to feel more secure about going into that job market one day.
This week, about 45 elementary and middle school students have already learned and mastered some of the skills of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math.
One thing we've been doing is cybersecurity. It's a lot of fun, and I've made lots of friends.
Specialists say it's one of the fastest-growing career fields out there. The program Cyber STEAM is designed to develop students' problem-solving, computational thinking, and digital literacy, and so far, the students have been enjoying their time.
They've come with smiles on their faces, some have brought their own robots, some are talking to their parents about purchasing their own robots, and just excited to embrace everything they're learning here.
The Cyber STEAM program will launch this September. For a full list of which schools will have the program, go to our website, wtkr.com.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just got one quick comment.
Ms. Geeley.
I'm just so excited that we finally have STEAM. It's in Newport News, I don't know what to do. When I first joined the board, that was the first thing I was saying, Dr. Kilkner, I want STEAM, I want STEAM. So it's so innovative that we're doing a site, the STEAM, and the cyber piece together, two of them, even with NASA, that's one of their big initiatives, they went from STEM to STEAM. So I feel so honored to see that it's finally in Newport News, it's doing great, and the kids seem so excited, because the arts is a big part of kids' function, you know? With me, I was an arts student, so just to see the STEM and STEAM is amazing. So thank you for Newport News always being on the cutting edge, being creative, and making sure our kids have what they need to go out here and fight in this great world. Thanks again.
Anyone else? Ms. Simon.
I would just thank you so much for this really great presentation, and I'm so excited about this program, especially in middle school. I've become aware that they've just revamped the computer science curriculum for middle school, and there's a class called Computer Science Discoveries that's out there, and I hope maybe you all could look at that class and try to integrate it into this program. I really would like to see every middle school student in Newport News get some exposure to computer science, and this could be a really good start to that.
I agree, we all agree.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so I fixated on the one new STEAM club at each Cyber STEAM school, and so can you tell us just elementary, middle, high school, or is it a mixture? you tell us just elementary, middle, high school, or is it a mixture? How many schools is it? Is it just seven schools, or how many schools is it?
So for this specific funding, it's just seven schools. So there is a Cyber STEAM lead teacher at every single school, so that lead teacher is actually going to facilitate the club. And we're starting off with one club, but I anticipate, based on interest in the camp and what we've started so far, that number could even grow. So one club right now at four elementary schools, two middle.
All right. Okay. Thank you. No, thank you very much for that report. Our next report we have, 5.03, Profiles of a Graduate: Strategic Planning. Dr. Poehl and Ms. Tracy Brooks.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Dr. Parker, and School Board members. I'm James Poehl, your Chief Academic Officer. This evening, Tracy Brooks and I will be sharing information with you regarding the planning process for the next strategic plan and the creation of a profile of a graduate for Newport News. As you're aware, progress takes planning. This year, our current strategic plan will sunset, and it is imperative to have another in place that will guide our division through the next five years. The information presented tonight will focus on the why of this work is important and how it will be accomplished, as well as who will be involved in the process. To start the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Dr. Poehl. Good evening.
Good evening.
The timing was perfect to pair the update of the strategic plan with the development of the profile of the graduate. Because in revising our strategic plan, we're starting with the end product in mind, and that's students who are college, career, and citizen-ready when they graduate. So in realizing the vision of college, career, and citizen-ready graduates, we will build on the momentum of our current strategic plan, which includes three academic benchmarks that form the core of our work, and they outline rigorous expectations for students in achievement, advancement, and youth development. So immediate and exceeding these three academic benchmarks requires a system of resources throughout the school division that support excellence and high performance. So in our current strategic plan, that system includes five strategic supports that surround the academic agenda, and they are quality curriculum, employee expertise, accountability systems, community connections, and financial resiliency. Now, our strategic plan was a framework that we use to determine our needs, to set our priorities, and to align our human and our financial resources to support continued success for our students. So I'd like to share just a few examples of the work guided by our current strategic plan that inspired innovative practices to move our school division forward. Oh, I'm sorry. We were among the first, and I think I went too far. We were among the first school divisions to create the position of graduation coaches to work with our high school students would help move our graduation rate to a high of over 93% for the past three years, and we expect it to be even higher for the class of 2019. We expanded the emphasis on STEM instruction and the curriculum through programs such as Cyber STEAM, which you just heard about, our engineering design challenges for elementary and middle-school students, and activities such as the STEM, the annual STEM Community Day, which we do in partnership with Christopher Newport University. And speaking of CNU, we expanded our community partnership with the university to increase opportunities for students through our new community captains program that grants early admission to qualifying 10th-grade students. And we also increased our emphasis on pursuing industry and professional certifications, with students earning more than 3,400 certifications for high school internships and careers this past school year. We expanded our youth development activities to create positive outcomes for students by launching two additional mentoring and leadership programs this past school year, the Bloom Empowerment Conference for middle-school girls, and the Rise Male Empowerment Conference for middle and high school boys. And we also increased our work in bullying prevention with a host of activities for staff and students throughout the year. Now, our strategic plan also addressed employee development, which is crucial to organizational growth and student achievement. To Naseya's earlier question, we hosted our third annual Innovate Conference for employees to learn exciting ways to integrate technology into instruction to invite creativity and to foster critical thinking skills. We were first in the state to create apprenticeship programs sanctioned by the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry for our child nutrition, our custodial, our transportation, and our clerical support employees. And in developing our operating budget, the strategic plan guided our work in aligning our priorities in a fiscally responsible manner. Year after year, our business office has continued to receive national recognition for outstanding financial management and distinguished budget presentation. And lastly, our staff has continued to adopt best business and operational practices to realize efficiencies for our buildings and grounds. Now, as part of the superintendent's post-entry planning process last November, he added two key areas as strategic supports, and they are school and student safety and equity and opportunity that will now become a part of our strategic planning process for years 2020 through 2025, and we're moving to a five-year plan to keep the process more efficient for planning purposes. So through our strategic planning process, we will identify and work to address the school division's needs and challenges, will revisit and determine the student benchmarks to measure academic progress, and then we will reaffirm the seven strategic supports that are to your right, or recommend new ones based on data analysis, the knowledge of our staff, and then input from various stakeholders throughout the community. Now, in talking about stakeholders, our planning process will be an opportunity for our families, our staff, our residents, and representatives from community organizations, businesses, and local colleges and universities to connect their vision for Newport News public schools to what will actually happen in our classrooms and in our programs. So to the right, we have our internal, or NMPS, stakeholders who will be involved in the process, and of course, to the left are those from the community. So to engage our community in this process, we are forming a stakeholder group consisting of a broad representation from entities from across the peninsula to provide input in developing the framework for both our five-year strategic plan and for the profile of a Newport News graduate, and we've included some of the stakeholders here before you. And so now, Dr. Poehl will talk more about what we view as an ambitious undertaking.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. As was just shared with you, the strategic plan gives the division goals and objectives to create a pathway to success for our students. However, in order to give the plan more purpose to all involved, there needs to be a specific focus on the attributes of a student who graduates from Newport News public schools. In 2016, the Virginia Department of Education released the profile of a Virginia graduate as seen on this slide. There were four main areas encompassed within this profile: content knowledge, workplace skills, community and civic responsibility, and career planning. This work done by the VDOE gives Newport News a baseline of expectations for all graduates in Virginia. However, it does not contain any specific local connections or needs for our students. Therefore, to give the new strategic plan a way to become realized, a profile of a Newport News graduate will be created alongside the work of developing our new strategic plan. This will create a specific list of attributes that all NMPS students are expected to have as they walk across the stage and accept their diploma. Let me share a few examples of what other divisions from across the nation have created. An Osago Local School District created this image to represent their profile of a graduate. Notice the local use of their graduates being both flexible and driven. In Franklin, Ohio, their graduate includes being self-directed, accountable, empathetic, as well as being flexible and resilient. Here's a profile developed by Talmud City Schools in Ohio. They chose to include productivity, and similar to our three Cs for citizens, college and career readiness, they have three Es: employ, enlist, enroll. These divisions took on a challenge to create their own local profile to highlight items their communities felt were vital for their graduates to have. As the work to create a strategic plan begins, the work to create a profile of a Newport News graduate will only strengthen the implementation of the new plan. In order to accomplish the task of developing a strategic plan and a profile of a graduate, there are three main meeting structures that have been developed. First, the driving group will be the stakeholder group Ms. Brooks outlined earlier. This group will be responsible for reviewing concepts and research, participating in group think activities, and creating, as well as sharing their ideas and thoughts with the entire group. They will also be asked to discuss this work outside of our regular scheduling meetings and bring back thoughts of others in their field, which will only strengthen our final Prior to and in between the stakeholder group meetings, the planning group will meet. This smaller group will use the information gleaned from research and other resources to develop the stakeholder meetings. The planning group will then incorporate the work of the stakeholder group to infuse the thoughts and ideas of the larger group into drafts for feedback. The planning group's main focus will be to move the work forward to meet all the established deadlines on our timeline. Following the second stakeholder meeting and prior to the final stakeholder meeting, a draft of the strategic plan and the profile will be shared to the larger community using an e-Town Hall format to garner even more feedback. This format will be held entirely online and communicated to all stakeholders, allowing them to write input on the plan and profile 24 hours a day through a set amount of time. The hope of this meeting structure is to include as much of the community as possible throughout the process. As Ms. Brooks said, it's an ambitious goal that we have. However, this slide breaks down the timeline for the work to be completed. The initial planning group will meet to develop the meeting structure prior to the first stakeholder meeting that we hope to have on October 17th. Following the first stakeholder meeting, the planning group will meet a few times in November and early December to review information from the meeting and create multiple drafts of each document for feedback. December 12th will be the second stakeholder meeting, where the group will focus on feedback from the drafts to create one draft of each document. Prior to the next stakeholder meeting, the planning group will meet in January to finalize the drafts and share them through an e-Town Hall meeting, which will take place during the month of February. And on March 19th, we will hold the final stakeholder meeting to consider the comments from the e-Town Hall and to create final drafts of each document. Prior to the formal presentation of the board on April 21st, the planning team will work to create final products to be shared. Anytime along this process, updates can and will be shared with the board as needed. Thank you for allowing us to present this tonight. Ms. Brooks and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Brown?
A great presentation, and appreciate the timeline that's been laid out, and as well as the identification of the various stakeholder groups. I think my question maybe is more for the chairman. In terms of this strategic plan being our division-wide document, November, January, March, are those the planned times when you're planning for the board to get together either for a workshop or a retreat to go over the progress and to provide additional feedback?
I would say this is this board's decision to do that. If we do decide to meet and want to meet for a retreat or what have you, we can use that time accordingly.
I just think if this is a strategic plan, that the board needs to be part of the stakeholder group.
Absolutely. The plan is to have the maximum of the two members to be a part of the stakeholder group.
Exactly.
And to report out to the full board.
Do you want...
Yeah, I personally think the full board should be involved, and we'll just make it a public meeting.
Yeah, I would concur with that, that it should be a full board meeting, and that we, this is our responsibility to make sure that the strategic plan is what it needs to be, so I think the board should be involved.
That's my opinion. Board members?
Well, I believe the board will, the purpose is to engage the board, and of course, the board, we value any engagement that the board may have. Most, second in importance is the community, making sure that we have opportunities for the community to come together and have, and hear their voice, and hear their discussion, and hear their feedback and input. I don't necessarily know if it would be productive to have the board and the community coming together in stakeholder meetings to have that kind of dialogue, because we're trying to solicit input from school division, staff, and community in order to have a holistic plan that's going to be developed and consolidated. So strategically, the best way to approach that is to engage these groups individually, so have some of those external stakeholder groups that will have board member representation at those stakeholder meetings, and then also have individual meetings with the board, and it can be done through a workshop format, or we could do a retreat in the spring where we're specifically focused on the strategic plan, where we can, where we could start to massage some of the information and data that's been collected from the external groups. But I don't necessarily know if every stakeholder meeting needs the full board's attention, because I think the purpose is to hear from those specific groups that we're engaging with. So just to be cautious, there's a process to this, and I think we want to make sure that we do ensure that the community's voice is heard. It's their plan as well, and the direction of the school division is the direction of the community. So we need to make sure that we engage all as possible, as much as possible.
And I want to make sure it doesn't come into a board meeting as well. You know, we want it to really be a board meeting, this is really the school's plans we kind of oversee for the policies and things of that sort, so I don't want all of us to be there, it really becomes a school board meeting. But having a board member or two on those stakeholder meetings is appropriate.
I mean, are we voting on it?
No, we're not going to.
Okay. They go as planned, you know? We want people to speak openly and honestly. Sometimes people don't do that when certain people are around, so, you know?
And I think what Mr. Poehl is hearing, that the board wants to be engaged in this process, which is what we have discussed, and we will ensure that we engage the board appropriately throughout the process.
We absolutely do that. And we do plan, as we said, to invite two board members to be a part of that large group.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. You have a question? I'm sorry. No, we're done?
No, no, it is a question.
Okay, well, we'll move the agenda to 5.04, we're going to get a proposed CIP budget. Ms. Mary Lou Basal.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you.
I got a promotion. Member of the board, Dr. Parker, good evening. I am mindful of the hour and the topic, so I'll try to get through it quickly. Last week, you got some information about the school division's capital needs in a presentation that we shared with you and the council. So tonight, what we want to do is give you a proposed recommendation for capital budget for the next five-year planning cycle. I thought it might be helpful if we start off looking at what we accomplished in the last five years. Over the last five years, we've had $57.3 million to use for capital needs. That was from 2015 to 2019, and these are the things we were able to accomplish with that. We were able to build a new school, Discovery STEM Academy was built during that time period. It was not built for the $20.7 million you see there, but that's what came from the CIP in that time period. We had some capital money from an earlier year, as well as some operating funds that went for that building. But 36% of the capital money from that five-year period went for that new school. You can see another 36% went to address HVAC replacements in our existing schools, 18% for bus replacements, and 5% for roofs, and another 5% for casework, learning cottages, and electrical replacements. So that's what we did in the last five years. As we put together a proposal for you this evening for the next five years, we looked at the facility assessment review that was done by Mosley Architects Force several years ago now, as well as our plant services staff's review and evaluation of our existing facilities. When we did the facility assessment, Mosley identified $76 million of immediate needs. Now, this assessment was done two to three years ago, completed two to three years ago. So immediate, $76 million, that would have been already completed, hopefully. And they also identified another $111 million of maintenance work that needed to be completed within the next five years. So again, half of that period is completed. Clearly, we didn't have the funding to do all of those things, so we've had to prioritize our needs, figure out what needed to be done, and what could be postponed. So some of the planning considerations are here for you this evening that we've gone through in this five-year cycle. Learning cottage replacements was something that you know was addressed in the Mosley study. They identified the need to replace all of them. We have 122 classrooms that are in learning cottages today around our school division. Their assessment was that $63 million would be needed to replace all of them, and that was a 2017 cost estimate. Clearly, doing all that at one time really isn't feasible, but in the plan we have for you this evening, we are recommending that we replace the cottages... you this evening, we are recommending that we replace the cottages at one of our elementary schools. We'll talk about that in a little bit. The facility study also identified $12 million worth of immediate needs for paving and concrete work. We have 130 acres of hardscape in our school division, so it's paved surfaces, whether it's parking or paved play areas or tennis courts or whatever sidewalks, whatever is concrete or paved. Today, we have $125,000 in our operating budget to address whatever needs come up in that area. So, you know, we barely can keep ahead of the potholes. We have not been receiving CIP funding for those needs, but we are proposing that we do put that in this five-year plan. Facility condition assessment also recommended replacement of Warwick High School within 10 years. This plan does not take us that far into the future, but it gets us close. So we think that's a topic that we need to talk about, and I'll say a little bit more about that in just a minute. And last on our list of planning considerations was the aviation academy. You know that we currently lease a facility at the airport that was built in 1949. It has a couple of maintenance challenges. Those used to belong to the airport commission more recently. We've been asked to pick up the maintenance responsibility there, so we are working with the airport commission as well as the city on what to do about a facility there for our kids that are in that program. So you will see nothing in this proposal this evening that addresses that. But let me talk a little bit more about Warwick. While the condition assessment did recommend a replacement within 10 years, closer to us than that, and in this five-year plan, are the needs for a roof replacement, an HVAC replacement, and hopefully to do something about the HVAC at Gatewood Peak, which also serves as the Warwick senior center. Currently, the roof that is on Warwick was put on in 1996. You know that we'd like to keep all of our roofs within 20 years. That roof will be 26 years old at the point where it's currently scheduled for replacement and will cost $4.6 million to replace it. The HVAC in the building was installed in 2003. You know that we see 15 years as a useful life for HVAC system. That system will be 21 years old in 2024, which is when it's currently scheduled in this plan to be replaced. And we still have window units in Gatewood Peak. You know, we're not the only ones that have window units, but at some point, we'd like to bring them into a different type of conditioned space, and that would cost $1 million and is currently scheduled for the first year of the plan, 2021. So that's $13.6 million of work at Warwick High School or the Warwick campus, something that we need to think about. And we think maybe need to have a study for to determine if, in fact, there could be a renovation of Warwick, or do we really need a replacement? And if we need a replacement, what would it look like and what would it cost? So this is our proposal for you this evening for what happens in the 21 to 25 timeframe. You can see some of the normal things you usually see. HVAC replacements and roof replacements are taking up still a large part of the capital plan as they need to, to keep our existing buildings working well. You see paving, as I mentioned, and also some ceiling replacements. Once we've done HVAC replacements and roof replacements, the ceilings have usually had their share of wear and tear and also need to be replaced. So you can see that we have just shy of $91 million in what we call capital maintenance over this five-year period of time. Next, we have renovation replacements, and there's already been some conversation this evening about Huntington. Huntington's replacement is still in the plan. It is still in the plan at $50 million in concert with the feasibility study that we had completed last year. We have, however, split it over two years. Last year, we had it in the first year of the plan, all 50 million. The city said it needed to be divided into two years. We've done that here. I mentioned a building addition to reduce the number of learning cottages. This was at Riverside Elementary. You see that that's in the plan for 2024 and is expected to cost about $5.6 million. So our renovation and replacement subtotal of $55.6 million. And then also included in our capital plan is our bus replacements, and we're asking for more than we've been getting. We've been getting on average $2 million a year. We've asked a little more than that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So this gives you just a visual of the relative size of each of the parts of the pie. We're asking, we're recommending to you that we request $160.5 million over the five-year period. You can see that $50 million of it would go to replace Huntington Middle School, which is 31% of the pie. The roof replacements and HVAC replacements together take 45% of the total. Bus replacements are 9%, and you can see the other paving, ceiling replacements, and the Riverside addition. The next few slides are just to show you what happens when specifically in each area. So we talked about Huntington a lot, so I won't go on with that anymore this evening. The Riverside learning cottages were, there are seven there. Six of them were put there in 1994. They've had their share of issues. We have replaced windows because of leaks. We replaced flooring because of leaks. We replaced siding and framing and on it goes. There are, you know that we have canopies that go to all of our trailers from the main buildings, and the canopies are experiencing some rusting. So there's still, it's time to do that, we believe, at Riverside. This is the roof projects and when they're scheduled. I'm not going to read all those to you. You can see that Warwick is in 2022, as I mentioned. These are HVAC projects by year, the ceiling replacements, paving. So it gives you some idea of what's going to happen, where, when, based on this particular plan. Okay, that's it for the buildings. Onto the bus fleet. This is our bus fleet aging schedule. You may not be able to read those small numbers at the bottom, but what they say is that that's the age of our buses. So we have buses that are as old as 19 years in our fleet. The green bars on the right are propane buses. And we have, for the last three years, been buying propane buses. They cost a little more than diesel buses, but they are, of course, cleaner, they are quieter, their repair cost is less. Ultimately, we believe their fuel costs will be less. Right now, we're amortizing the cost of the tank in our fuel cost. So we aren't quite there yet. We have, the first year that we bought propane buses, we were able to get a rebate for the upcharge from diesel to propane, which is about $7,000 to $8,000 per bus. That was from the Virginia State Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy. We no longer get that because they don't offer it. We're hoping that they will do that again. Last year, we qualified for an EPA grant, applied for and qualified for it. They gave us $20,000 for each diesel bus. We put out of its misery. We were able to put 18 away, and so we got $360,000, which was able to buy three more propane buses. This is what we're proposing for you this evening to consider, and that is that we spend $2.7 to $2.9 million, depending on the year, to buy 24 to 26 buses, again, depending on the year. Note that the age of the buses we'd be replacing would still exceed the state's recommended 15-year replacement cycle. So we would still be replacing 18-year-old buses five years from now. We are, every year when we go through this process, very mindful of the need to balance our capital needs with the available funding. And it's with that in mind that we propose to you this evening this particular plan. One of the things that makes the balancing act difficult are things like Warwick High School, and this is the same slide I showed you earlier, but it has a question at the bottom, which is probably an obvious question. I think the answer may be not quite so obvious. Should we invest $13.6 million in these system replacements before a decision is made on renovation or replacement of Warwick High School? What would you do if it was your $13.6 million? Well, I won't tell you what I'd do for mine, but I would tell you, I'd think long and hard about it before I would do it. So I'll also tell you that those things are in this five-year plan we're presenting to you this evening because we don't know what the future holds for Warwick High School. And should we allow these systems to continue to go unrepaired, unreplaced? You know, we do, when we don't get the money we need to replace a roof, we patch it. Sometimes we're patching the patches. Depends on how old the roof is. Same for the HVAC system. So right now, what we propose to you in this plan is that we do include this $13.6 million in the plan. So this is what we're proposing to you. I know at this hour, you probably don't have any questions that I cannot answer anyway. So, but I'd be glad to try if you're up for it.
Mr. Brown.
So in the replacement of Huntington, we have 25 and 25.
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason that, is there a reason for the 25 and 25 because we can't spend $50 million in one year? Or is it, yeah, is there any other reason?
Well, we can spend as much money as we can get, Mr. Brown, in a year. However, the city indicated that they wanted it spread over two years. We did put $50 million in the first year last year, and they said it was just too big a bite. It is a lot of money. So for them to go and get that, they did ask that we put it in two years. They did also suggest that we could spend it in the first year, no matter when we get it. I'm going to advise you that that's a bad thing to do, and Mr. Wallen happens to agree. So we don't think that's a good idea. So in this particular case, we wouldn't get the second $25 million until 2022. We would advise you that we not do that project until 2022, not do it in 2021. I know that's not the news that our Huntington supporters want to hear. It's not the news we want to share either, but truthfully, from a business standpoint, I don't think that's good business. We can't spend money we don't have.
So better to spend it all at once, essentially, than to spend it in pieces?
So we would spend it in the second year, not the first.
And that was really my commentary.
The city attorney's office has rendered a different opinion. Lynn knows that, and we know that. We just happen not to agree, and it's his opinion.
And that was generally my commentary. I cautioned the board that we heard over the last two years very clearly and distinctly from our forensic city council that any money that was not in the first year is not money that is needed. And therefore, because that was definitively guidance given to us, I think we don't want to contradict ourselves by moving money to a second year because it sends, potentially sends a message that the money is not needed when the money is needed. In order to build Huntington, we need $50 million, not 25. And I think to make that clear, it needs to be in the first year and as well as the other projects, the ceilings and the paving that does need to be done, the things that need to be done need to be in the first year regardless. The decision to fund 37 or 38 of it and fund 25, those are all decisions, I think, by our forensic council. They can fund whatever they want, but it's our job to provide a budget of what is needed, the full cost of what is needed, and then the decision to fund, that can be execution types of issues. My second question is just around the, we've talked about the $2.8 million for the design of Huntington, and so I'll just ask the question again of has the $2.8 million for the Huntington design been appropriated and received to us?
No.
No.
It's been approved.
So we're still in two years of it approved but not allocated.
It has not been appropriated.
So it's been two years now that we've had money that we were supposed to be in our hands. So in, so the follow-on question to that really is, once we receive the $2.8 million, how long is it before we can actually get a design of a Huntington middle school so that we can start?
We think it would take us about 12 months to do a design of a school this size.
So if we got it today, then we're one year from there, and then we get the money for construction, then we're probably, it takes about two years to get the school.
Yes, sir.
So now we're, best case scenario, if we had the money in our hands tonight, it'd be three years before we could open the break ground on the school.
I think that's reasonable.
Easy, three years.
And the longer it takes to get the $2.8 million for the design, then it's another year thereafter.
Pretty much.
All right. And this, the follow-up question just would be, has any reason been given, explanation as to why the $2.8 million has not been appropriated to us yet?
Yes, I believe the city's intent to do the study that they've been doing, they shared with the board last week, some of the preliminary results of that study. So I think their intent is to wait until that effort is complete, and then I think they make whatever decision they're going to make and perhaps appropriate the funding at that time. That's my understanding. I don't know if Dr. Parker's is any different.
We closed the meeting with the general, with some general comments, and my remarks were that we are anxiously waiting to see the parcel of land that the school will need to be built on and occupied so we can access the monies necessary to begin the study. Because that's the whole purpose of the city's study of this, of this whole campus plan is to develop a multi-use campus that would allow them to have recreation and other facilities on that big block of land. But also, we need to identify specifically the parcels of land that the school will occupy. Once we know that, we've designed it, we've already started our work in doing a conceptual piece, so we're just ready to hire an architect so we can start designing the building for that parcel of land. So as soon as we get to that process, and I think the mayor said he'd like to continue that dialogue through his committee and bring in those, bring in that work and those departments necessary, but we just need to know the parcels of land. Where do you need the school to fit your design? And we're ready to go. So that's where we are. In terms of the 25 and 25, there's two reasons why 25 was put in this budget. One, it's more than what the city initially has in the current FY20 budget, but they pushed, they put that in a two-year, put that in two years, over two-year period. If we get the money today, we still will not spend money until that timeframe. So that second year would be the time. If they appropriated it in the first year, we do a full year to design the school. The main thing we would have to worry about at that time would be demolition and ground assessment at that time. So that part of that 25 would be able, would be able to be spent using those funds to, for that purpose. And then the second year, you're talking the rebuild, so you still would need that additional 25. So if they'll pass it, we can spend it. And we're trying to put a budget in place that's reasonable and that the city will consider, but we still fundamentally disagree with building a middle school for less than that amount or at least having those dollars available. I'd love to come in well under that budget, and we'll try everything, every way to do that, but the longer we wait, the longer cost materials and everything else go into, come into play in terms, and also hiring labor. Labor costs are going up as well. So we really are still cautious about the cost of not putting in, and just going by what the board said, put in what you need. So that's what we, that's the figure we need, we feel we need to reasonably build a facility of that type.
Well, the $50 million projection that we got from the architects was based on a 2020 bid date, and they recommended we consider 5% to 6% escalation every year that we delay.
So it's likely 60 million by the time that we?
Perhaps.
I mean, that's the cost of doing business.
Yeah, right. It's just inflation.
It's called area cost factor. You go to DC, you pay more. You know, go to Mississippi, you pay less. But the bottom line is, there's nothing we can do about it until they appropriate funds. And so I say to the board, you know, like I said many times before, you're going to have to draw the line in the sand somewhere. So it depends on what your appetite is. I mean, because these meetings can go on forever and ever and ever, and I personally don't want to attend another one, to be honest with you, because I understand exactly what's going on. Like I told Mr. Mayor, you know, if you don't want a school, just come out and say you don't want one, and then we all move on about our business and we do what we have to do. But I think we as a board really need to, again, get together and put some markers on the wall and say, okay, if this trigger's not met at this time, this is what we do. We go to Plan A. If it's not, this trigger's not met, we go to Plan B. We really need to do that because we can meet and meet, and I'm tired of the meetings, to be honest with you, because it's real simple. Appropriate the money, and we move forward. I mean, it's just that simple, board members. I mean, it's not rocket science. I mean, this is day-to-day business. So we need to get together and put down a marker. Because I said, I think, two years ago, and I think just like the Mr. Gentleman there, the Reverend, said they are delaying, 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 delaying. And I hear things that, you know, people don't want a school there because they want to move a certain population out of the city and things of this nature, you know. And I don't want to be used as the, this board to be used as the reason for that happening because it's exactly what's going to happen if we don't fight to put, keep a school there. And then this board will go down in history as moving citizens away from, away from that area at the end of the day. So no, we need a school, and regardless of how the funding looks, you know, you, administration, you can agree what you're going to propose to us, but Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, we need to start speaking a language to let them know that, you know, we have deadlines too to meet.
Well said. Yes.
I concur with Mr. Brown and Mr. Harris. We need to ask for what we need, and I think from what I understand, the city is still talking about the $37 million as opposed to?
That's in the current, that's in the current FY20 budget. That was passed in their current budget. This, we're proposing this as the FY21 to 25 budget, and we've put that $50 million figure right back into this budget.
So we need to ask for what we need. Now we're looking at at least three years at the earliest when ground could possibly be broken, whether we're tearing it down or rebuilding or whatever the case may be. And for every year that we move away from Huntington being closed, that's the year that we moved closer towards, as work continues to decay. And at some point, the two are going to meet, and then which will take priority? And what usually will take priority in a situation like that is what you have there. Warwick is still there. Huntington is not there. So we can, I can understand why the community does not believe that we're operating in good faith, and I agree with Mr. Harris. good faith, and I agree with Mr. Harris, we need to say what we're going to do, and then we need to do it.
Okay, well said, board members. Well said, only one thing you have to remember that they hold, they're the purse strings, and, you know, we'll have to, you know, those voices aren't held at the, when you go vote. You know, just I was, just tell everyone, those voices are held when you vote. We are here, I do, I mean, I have to be the positive one on this board. The meetings, we have been meeting, but we've been taking, we have been taking steps forward, though we, I don't think we've been going backwards. One time, you know, I've been around construction many, many years ago, you know, in my old employment. It takes time, you know, to move, to close a school in one year, all right, to close a school in one year, to get them agreeing that we are going to build a school. I think that's a positive deal. Now, this year, we did see them actually put money in where they didn't put money in at all. I think that's another positive steps. So, you know, it's the glass half-full or half-empty. And so, our next meeting, the latest meeting, I thought, again, a positive meeting. I believe some of the city council members, as you heard them, I wouldn't say names, but you heard them express the need to put the school there because Huntington was the staple from years back. And so it all starts with the school. I quoted me in the paper, that's what I said, starts with the school. I do believe there are city council members now, now, that are on, agreeing with us that we must move explicitly in a timely manner. I personally, I'm not going to name the names, but we, you know, we're talking about 90 days. So that gives us to the end of the year for the mayor and his committee to sit there with the business of private, public, eventual what have you, to come up with that timeline. And then, you know, I agree that, you know, if that 90 days goes by, January, you know, we should be designing the school. Now, if that doesn't happen, then we, then I think we have a major problem. You know, I don't think we have a major problem now, but I believe that, you know, we don't own the purse strings. And so we can talk all we want to talk about, you know, how we're going to get this money and protest, you know, the bylaw says that the city provides us with adequate money based on the law, based on law. They give us more money than, you know, the law says. Not that this is right or wrong, but the law says they've given us more than the monies, what most cities do, you know, give to the schools. So, you know, we're trying to work this out, and I hear you loud and clear. And, you know, patience is virtue, you know? And I believe we're going, I believe, I have to believe. If I didn't believe, then, you know, I have to believe that we are moving in the right direction. And so 90 days is the time that?
I'd like Ms. Russo to come up and just speak to next steps. I know obviously the board will consider this budget, and we have all month if you have any considerations. But upon passing, passing the budget, the city has changed their timeline for submitting our proposed priorities, capital priorities to the city manager. But she is required by code to submit her budget to the, to the city council by November?
November the first.
First. So could you walk, just walk through that process once we move to approval?
Sure, we're going to ask you to take, take action on this in October, and the rest of the city departments will begin entering their data tomorrow, so they'll get that done. We'll enter ours whenever it is that the board acts on it. At that point then, there are a series of meetings that happen at the city with, other city departments about what their capital needs are, and often we've been asked to make appreciation about ours, and so if we're asked to do that before you vote, we could present what we presented this evening and just say it's not been approved by the board, if that's okay with you, we can do that. And then, at the point you've approved it, we'll send it to the city. The city manager will, by city ordinance is required to have something to the city council by November the first, and she's been doing that. This past year was a little off, but I think she did have some proposal initially for them on the, before the first for them to consider. At that point then, the city council begins to have work sessions to talk about the capital budget, and I don't know whether there'll be another joint meeting with the board, perhaps there would be.
We would assume so.
And so they will usually meet in November and December, and then usually are scheduled to vote on the CIP in January, at the latest February. Like I said, this past year was like a little unusual, so they got kind of off their normal pace, but that's the normal schedule, what we're used to is normal before this past year.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If there's no more questions, we can move the agenda, and thank you for that report. I guess we're going to move to 5.05, the membership report, 5.06, construction report, 5.0, those two were part of your package. We'll move on to 5.07, comments by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our students, our parents, staff, and Newport News community for another successful school opening. On the first day of school, several board members and I had the opportunity to visit schools and welcome students, families and staff for the new year. It was a wonderful way to begin the school year. I had the opportunity to visit Achievable Dream, where students participated in special morning routines, including yoga. But a special shout-out before you click the slide, to Hilton, who celebrated their 100th year opening on the first day, and we definitely had a great time. I didn't have a slide there, but we were very, the students and the community were very proud to enter the building that day on their 100th school year. But Achievable Dream was just one example of the innovation and practices that take place to ensure that our students are ready to learn. I also had the opportunity to visit Discovery STEM Academy, where I had a little fun with STEM. We were actually attempting to determine how long I could travel down, down the hallway during this video. Actually, I was breaking rules, I just, she just told me the kids couldn't do it, so I wanted to try it. As we continue to focus on preparing students for college, careers, and citizenship, we will share our progress and other measures of advancement and success. Our students will continue to achieve great results with the support of our staff, families, and the members of the community. I'd like to congratulate Menchfield High School's Lead for Change team. They were named a grand prize winner in the Lead for Change Challenge, a yearly challenge that offers awards to schools that demonstrate leadership, community action, and community impact. The Menchfield team engaged in several service projects to benefit the community, including food drives and anti-bullying campaigns. And the Menchfield students presented, were presented with a $10,000 award check to Thrive Peninsula, excuse me, they presented a $10,000 award check to Thrive Peninsula during an award ceremony last week. This Thursday, September 19th, I will participate in the South District Town Hall Meeting, hosted by Councilwoman Sandra Sherry, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Dowling Gross Cultural Arts Center. I look forward to sharing some of the great programs and instruction happening in our classrooms every day. Last month, I was fortunate enough to attend the Councilwoman Sharon Scott's North District Town Hall Meeting. I want to remind our high school families that Back to School Night will be held on Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM, and our middle school Back to School Night will be held on Tuesday, October 1st at 6:00 PM. We encourage our middle school and high school families to attend, to attend, to meet their teachers' children, their children's teachers, learn more about the curriculum, and see firsthand how college, career, and citizenship skills are integrated into student learning. High school families are also invited to a financial aid workshop from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, September 26th, in the Warwick High School Auditorium. That's an important one for families, for parents and seniors. Families will receive a step-by-step explanation of federal student aid, of the federal student aid process, along with information about grants, loans, and scholarships. Additional college readiness and financial aid workshops will be held throughout the school year. Newport News Public Schools has partnered with the Health Heroes Organization again this year to offer all students the flu vaccine for free during special in-school clinics. Consent forms were provided to all students earlier this month, and the forms and schedule are posted on our website. The flu shot clinic will be held September 30th to October 3rd. I encourage all families to take advantage of this free opportunity to protect your child. Recently, our school has experienced, and this is something I added here for tonight, I just wanted to make sure we, we mentioned this and reflect on this this evening. Recently, our city has experienced several tragic violent incidents. I've been disheartened by these incidents affecting all of us, but they have an even greater impact on our young people, and we must stay focused on that. It is contingent on us all to do what we can to mitigate the violence in our neighborhoods and our community. Our schools, students, and staff are committed to combating these challenges facing our communities. Through schools, through clubs and national organizations, our students take, are taking stands against violent acts and bullying behavior. Newport News Public Schools is dedicated to ensuring the safety of our students, staff, and families, and we have one of the largest security teams in the state who work directly with our school administrators to ensure school safety and security. We have a great partnership with Newport News, with the Newport News Police Department. In fact, 13 school resource officers serve our middle schools and high schools, and the police department has recently adopted all of our elementary schools this year. And they are making, they're making an impact already by visiting schools on weekly basis. Officers visit each school, and they've been visible, and a camera and buzzer system is in use in all schools. We talked about the Raptor identification system as one of our key measures for improving school safety this year. We've also are increasing surveillance cameras, as you heard this evening, monitoring school entranceways, common areas, school grounds. Todd Stadium has cameras around the facility as well to ensure that we can be vigilant in terms of, in terms of public safety. And I want to, first of all, encourage all our guests, and please note that all guests entering Todd Stadium and indoor school sporting events proceed through our security checklist, checkpoints, and which includes a metal detector and handbag and backpack inspection. We do everything possible to ensure that our sporting events remain safe. Newport News Public Schools employs a variety of security measures in our daily efforts to provide safe and secure environments, and we'll continue to do so. So we're looking forward to October, which is Bullying Prevention Month, and I reflect on several of our speakers today, this evening on the dais, and we have to remain vigilant whenever we hear instances where, where a child is, may have gone through a traumatic situation such as bullying or harassment or anything, we have to take that very seriously. And I encourage all of my staff to listen to the words and listen to the frustrations and know that we, we have a part to play in ensuring that every student has a good education in Newport News Public Schools. We may not be at our best every moment of every day, but we can be at our best when we focus on the issues. Not the personalities, not the emotional piece, but the issues that support student safety, student emotional well-being, and student, and student education. So I encourage us to continue to do that and remain vigilant, and so, and continue to listen to, to our parents as they, as they come forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. At this time, item number 6.01, protocols again for addressing the school board. Are there any cards? Are there any cards? Are there any cards? There being none, we'll move to matters by our school board. Mr. Gore, you're up.
Hello, hello, thank you for having me. I wanted to start off by saying a quick welcome to all students to a productive 2019 to 2020 school year. Here at Newport News, we aim to provide students with the best opportunity to receive the best education possible, and we'll continue to aim for these goals throughout the upcoming school year. I would like to state that last weekend, there was a leadership retreat, and although I was not able to attend, I'm sure it was a lot of fun. It was, it is an important time for Newport News to grow and develop. As students are being exposed to a new environment, it's important for these students to be the cause of change and to initiate in activities that will enable our leaders to make connections because once we do that, our leadership will be a cohesive entity that is an example to other cities. Lastly, I would like to remind all students to keep a positive attitude when moving along this year. Yeah, I know I've taken up a lot of time, sorry. But one of, but one of the things that I've learned throughout my junior year was that obstacles are called obstacles because you're able to climb over them. And if you're able to keep that in mind, then you will succeed.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Dr. Bass?
Okay, I'll be very short. I had the pleasure of visiting three schools for opening day. That was the day for the beginning of my vacation, so I wasn't able to stay all day, but I did go to visit three schools before I left, and just amazing things happening in Newport News Public Schools, like our superintendent says. Very, very proud, excited, teachers, parents, students, and I'm looking forward to a great school year. It's the most wonderful time of the year. I would like to congratulate those schools that were recognized today. We have hard-working staff, hard-working students, and it's great to see that that is recognized. Something that was just placed on my heart, we have a very important election coming up in November. We have local elections, state elections, national elections. We're talking about capital improvement, money for capital improvement projects, and it's very, very important, I'm talking to everyone out in the visual land as well, that you make sure that you are, study your candidate, study the issue, and think about the impact that your vote is going to have on education. We don't know how the elections, of course, are going to turn out, which impact the economy, which impacts the funding, so it's very, very important that we are keen, keenly aware of what's going on as far as elections are concerned. So I encourage everyone, make sure that you register to vote. I believe the last day is October 15th, I think that's the last day, so make sure you register to vote and that you use your vote wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief of Staff, Mr. Brown, and me visited a lot of schools on first, first day, and I appreciate the escort. I had a great time with you. I also noticed that every kid I saw was happy. Parents, I saw, I told Mr. Wright, I said, I didn't even see a kid cry. You know, everybody was breaking away from their parents, running into the classroom. And I said, is that normal? No, not really. So I, you know, and that's the first thing I picked up on, am I right or wrong? And I said, everyone seems to be happy to get back to school. So I think that's a good sign. All the teachers were motivated, I met wonderful principals, and, you know, and when I spoke to people, you know, I told them, just stay motivated and be confident. You know, I think we get away from that, and, well, I had a, I didn't have a problem, but my mother used to tell me, hey, son, you're cocky, you're cocky, when I was growing up as a teenager. And then later on, she said, no, you were just very confident, you know? So it all depends on how we approach things. And I think we can get our point across, you know, without, you know, you know, being too facetious, but I think people need to understand that we are here to educate our kids, and we are champions of kids, and if that means going to the mat for them every day, that's what we do. I'm just only one voice, but it's also my job to sway my peers here to my left and to my right. Something that touched me was the parent, and she's still here, and I, you know, we know, we can't comment while you're here, but I thought that was pretty moving to create a buddy system. I don't know how they, I don't know how they, what they would look like, to me, it's pretty easy, because I often, I often hear and see that in other places. I travel a lot, and I, and so I've heard that before. And I don't know if we do that now, or whatever the case may be, more of an emergence-type thing?
We have it bastard, but it's never, never, never enough for new students coming to the schools and those kind of things.
Okay, yeah.
It's never, you know, we could always do more.
Right, got you, yeah. I just think that's a wonderful thing, you know, to create a buddy system. The, I'm a student of history, and I think we have a Waterloo moment here, I really do, and I think everybody remember what, who Napoleon was, until he ran across, I think, Williams out of, out of, out of Great Britain, and where they beat him at the Battle of Waterloo. And Napoleon beat up on a lot of people, he really truly did, and he met his match by a lesser number of individuals, no different from the last 300, you know, the Spartans, the last 300, you know, they held off, you know, 10 times their size for at least three days, and it still goes down in history. And so I think we, you know, yeah, I look at the glass half-full, Mr. Chairman, and I think that we as a board, sometimes I need to go back and look at history, that you can get things accomplished, things that may seem pretty tough at this moment, but I think if we make sure we maintain as a team, create a team, and ensure that we are all on the same sheet of music. So my point is, amongst us, the board, no one else, that I would like to have a plan amongst us, just in case that 50-50 ball does not go our way. I think we still need a plan, either you plan to fail or fail to plan, either way you're going to get it. So my purpose is to ensure that we have a plan, that if it does not work out the way we think it should, then I don't, just don't want to sit here and just go, well, what do we do next? Okay? And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, I too want to thank
All right. Well, I too want to thank Chief of Staff, Mr. Wright, for being our escort around on the first day. Had a great time and really appreciated getting a chance to meet the principals and the excited kids. I too saw a lot of excited faces. It was a great first day at school at Richneck and Dozier and Woodside, all the various schools around our city. And it was great to see, I do my poll, my informal poll every year, and this year, it was Spider-Man. Mr. Harris saw, I counted it up. Spider-Man is the most popular superhero for this year. It is ebbed and flowed. You all have heard me in previous years. I think last year it was Batman. And surprisingly enough, Spider-Man was, was it this year. So that, I think that's a harbinger of things to come, means we're off to a great start. It's going to be a great year. As well, there's going to be a Denby Day Parade this weekend. Looking forward to seeing folks out at that. I believe there's going to be some good sunshine and a nice weather, so I'll be, I think I'll have some candy to throw out. It'll be wonderful. So don't ride, don't eat too much candy, want to throw it at you, but have a little bit. And don't ask for more. Want to give you some. But looking forward to Denby Day, always a fun time and a fun day. And now that we're off to a really great start, and we heard some, some good things, the technology plans and all the other things. It's, I think it's time for the business of advocacy for our students. And we'd be, I'd be remiss in not doing my job if I didn't mention, we're in the capital season. We started off the school year, it's now time for the capital budget. This is the time that we try to ensure that the children have the best facilities that they can to learn in. Because we know we've been, we've had reported before, I believe it's around nine months of additional learning that can take place in a good building. And we have to make sure that that side of it is, is sound. And in doing so, we have an obligation to make sure that the, the students are in the best environments that they can, they can be in. So I mentioned, I iterate again, a partner that is sincere and serious. I'm not sure that a partner that's sincere and serious would make you wait two years to get two point eight million dollars that they told you they give you. And I'm not pointing, I'm not placing blame, pointing fingers. I'm simply talking about the actions and what actions tell you about what someone's going to do and what they're going to continue to do. So having had a joint meeting and we had assurances from the other side, told to my face that we were going to get two point eight million dollars. And here we sit two years later and we don't have it. So I, I say that that, that speaks. That speaks. And then as well, we've, we've talked about it and talked about it. But now it's, it's really, it is time, and this is the year. If, in terms of my own money and looking at my own home, I would not spend thirteen point eight million dollars on my own home when the home was falling apart and needed to be renovated or replaced. I just wouldn't. So Warwick High School, I think it's time to do that study and determine exactly what the cost of renovation or replacement is and move towards that. And either we get the money for renovation or replacement, or we start the, the procedure of, just like we did with Huntington, a disciplined procedure of moving, moving forward, that we just need to move forward on, on that building. And then the same thing with the Aviation Academy. It is more than pastime, in terms of the Aviation Academy and the challenges that are there, to either get that, get the, get the things squared away with that building or move on to another site where we're going to educate the kids. Because it is, before I got on this board, that building was falling apart. And it was talked about many years ago, before I, ten years before I got on this board, talking about moving away from that site. And we're still in the same building. With, with all the challenges, I won't get in detail of the challenges that we've had with that building. But it's, it is time, it's past time to make the assessment of this is what it costs to renovate or replace. And if we don't get the money to renovate or replace, then move on with the next plan, which is to simply consolidate and or compress our facility plans. And then that brings me to my last point, which is just, is more of a, it's more of a legal question than anything else. We, as the constitutional body that is responsible for assessing whether or not a school is needed in a neighborhood, we have done an assessment and we have determined that there roughly, memory serves me, is six hundred, I'll call them child families, six hundred children and their families, to a thousand children and their families are present in the area that is formerly known as Huntington. Therefore, there is, by our own assessment by this board, we have said that a school was needed in that area. So not having that, not having a school in that area, what are the legal ramifications of not having a school in that area? Meaning, is there a violation of desegregation settlement that was, that was reached years, in years prior? Is there any kind of liability that that presents to either the school division or to the city for violating an assessment that was made by the board? Because the board has made an assessment, done a study, done an analysis and determined that Huntington, there needs to be a Huntington Middle School in that site, in that area of the city. And if that is not the case, if there is no violation, if there's no issues, then what is, what is the recourse or what is the problem with having just one middle school in the entire city? And what is, so in essence, what is the, what are the limitations and powers of the, of the board to make an assessment that schools are needed? Because we've made this assessment, it's been years now, making an assessment of the school being needed and still not having the funding for it. So what are the ramifications of the consequences of not having, not having funding for that school and not having a school in that area?
We can get back to it with the.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I just want to say, like a lot of other board members had the opportunity to tour a lot of the different schools on the first day and just to see the excitement on the kids' face and the teachers' faces, just to see these classrooms. I was like, I wish I was going to school now, just the, the different learning spaces. The one class I went to, Mrs. Heather Macaroni, is that I believe her last name? She drew a mirror on the whole wall. It was just, which is amazing. So special thanks to all our teachers that are, did a great job and the students and the whole staff. And just looking forward to exciting year in Newport News Public School System. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Mrs. Simons.
I also really enjoyed the first day of school. I was fortunate to be at Jenkins Elementary School and with the members of First Baptist Church Morrison, who were there literally leading cheers for our students as they came off the bus. I also enjoyed being at the Lead to Feed Program at Menchville High School. I'm also really proud of being elected as the Chair of the Board for New Horizons Career and Technical Centers. And really excited about the new programs that we have to connect our students to careers. I am just starting my eighth year now on the Newport News School Board. And I am so proud to say that I've only missed one meeting that whole time. So I just really have enjoyed so much being on the board. And we've started a couple new STEM programs since I've been on the board. We have increased our graduation rates to historic levels. And I just have to say, I think it's really important for our leaders in the community to be proud of their local public schools and to stand up for their local public schools. And I think that's a high standard that we need to hold all of our elected officials to. But I just can't say how happy I am to be serving the families and the children of Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Wow, woo, what a meeting, what a first meeting. Great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. Again, our schools got off to an excellent start. I want to thank all the organizations that were out there, the clubs, the fraternities, the sororities that were at the entrance of many of our elementary schools, welcoming our children in for the first day. So to all those churches and clubs and women's groups and men's groups that were out there that support us. I think we had some very, very good involvement and engagement with our community. Especially, especially thank you to all the students at C and U, who come out and line up Warwick Boulevard and with their signs and actually act like cheerleaders. And then what they also do, they also involve themselves in making the citizens know that school's back in. So to slow down your car, you know, be mindful. I just heard a story the other day that I got text in my neighborhood, I'm one of this neighborhood, I guess it's called Next Door. And apparently, the first day, there were three or four cars that went directly around the buses. And so that's, again, I'm, I'm a proponent for the arm on the bus. Because it only takes one kid to be hit, you know? If we ticket you and fine you for speeding around a kid that saves a life, so be it. So be it. But I think that's something that this school board, again, I think we should go back and, that's a really, really big, and it scares me, when I see, most of our speed limits are thirty-five and forty-five miles an hour. And when kids go around these buses, the first day of school, and so we're looking out for them. Take the license plate number. I'm not telling you to tell on them, but you know, may, maybe, maybe, maybe we can, maybe we can send their name and then send them a note to tell them to slow down. It's not necessarily about incarcerating people, but it's also about notifying folk. You know, it's about notifying, it's not really incarcerating and finding them. Sometimes we need to have a system in place. Think outside the box, okay? Turn the number in. We don't know who the car owns you. If you're in Germany, you're speeding in Germany, they don't pull you over, they just send something to your mailbox, right? And then they say, then you have to prove it if it wasn't you or not. And I was in Germany and he says, suppose I take that Porsche and drive, you know, a hundred fifty miles down the road and I get a ticket? But I was test driving, he says, guess what? They tell the dealership that I get it from, they can't sell any cars unless you pay it. Unless you tell us who took that car out, right? And so, not saying we need to go that far, but let's be, let's be careful while we out there driving on our kids. Again, I was there at the Menchville High School when they were being recognized and received a ten thousand dollar check thanks to Pete Mercer, I believe is his name, and the Menchville staff who all did the presentation. I was glad to be there, thanking Ms. Simons for being up on the stage and representing us as well. I had the pleasure already to be a guest speaker at Sedgfield Elementary School. And the topic of discussion basically was policy, procedures, and responsibility of the school board and rules. So let me tell you, I was talking to the principal, Principal Ms. Cox. I was speaking with her in, in the cafeteria and all of the third graders come, came in and you didn't hear anyone speaking. And then their hands went up and started asking questions. And time and time and time after, again, Mr. Hunter, why aren't teachers, yes, yes, why aren't teachers paid? Why don't teachers make more money? I must have had that question asked four or five times. Why don't teachers get better computers to, to teach us with? And truly, that, that was the, and so obviously the teachers are their friends and that was wonderful to hear. So thank them, thank them for the goodie basket that they gave me with all types of cookies and candy and Kit Kats and things of that sort. So thank you. A big shout out, again, you heard it from our superintendent, to Police Chief Drew. Let me tell you something. The city of Newport News hired a gym and a police chief. He is everywhere. His commitment to bonding with the community that now he and his staff and his officers have adopted an elementary school. And they will be attending and shaking hands each and every day. And that's that bridge that we need to do, get our young folks early and understanding that, you know, that blue uniform is a friend. You know, we have to start, it's a culture that has to change. And he's looking to change the culture. And I'm going to give him a shout out and tell him, hopefully one day he'll come here and give us a little report of how things are going. I'm really looking forward to that. So Chief Drew, a great job. So here I am again, being positive, because I'm, I'm going to thank the city council, the city manager and the city, and, and the mayor for, again, hosting another meeting. Guess what we did this year? We hosted meetings. Now, we're just talking, but before, we were not even talking. So, so I want you to put this in perspective. At one time, they wouldn't even meet with us. Now they're meeting. Though we may not like how the conversations are moving, because they're not moving fast enough, but we are taking forward steps. Construction, even if we had the money today, it would still be two and a half years before that, it would be built. And we know, I know there's a, I know there's a big concern. I hear you, that if we move those last bit of children or students out of Heritage High School, that Huntington would be forgotten. I have at least two more, two and a half more years on this board. I promise those individuals that when we shut that school down, as long as I'm here on the board, that a new Huntington High School would be built. I, I believe that. And you have to believe that. You have to have faith and you have to really believe that those citizens out there do want a new Huntington. Thirty million dollar C and I grant that we've got. In that meeting, they asked, where is the money for Huntington? Where's the money for Huntington? I know the city is slow in making plans to get this money. But after our last meeting, a couple of the city council members and I sat there and spoke. And I says, you know, we really need to move this. And I says, how about ninety days? Says, Gary, will you support that? I would support that. So I'm a member of that, that committee, along with Dr. Parker, Ms. Rousseau, what have you. That's going to be the push. I think part of it, just the understanding that we want to do, I think the city wants to do a private partnership, much like they did in Norfolk, to help them relieve some of the money. But I know Dr. Parker's been talking to individuals, I know the mayor's been talking to folks out here that actually have deep pockets that can come up with, you know, five million dollars or ten million dollars. I know the shipyard really wants to work with us. I know Ferguson wants to work with us. And so, you know, we just have to, I know patience, patience is virtue though. But we are moving. I do hear my board. I do, I do hear their board. And it's their, and it's their job to keep that whip and pressure on top of me to ensure that we do exactly that we say we're going to do. And I believe we are going to do it. So, you know, just keep the faith. Because great things are happening in Newport News. We went from not talking to it for them putting money into the budget, right? There was no money this year. They actually put it in their budget, even though not the amount that we want. Guess what? Many of you went out and bought a car, said, I'm going to spend twenty thousand dollars. And when you left that dealership, that car cost twenty-four thousand. And many of you did home renovations and you said, I'm going to spend this amount of money. And guess what? You have to have that contingency plan. You didn't stop building that deck. You know, once you start building it, and I don't believe that when we get to a point of building this school, if money's fall short, I just can't believe that the city and the citizens of this city will allow a three quarter of a brand new building just to go vacate. Newport News is not like that. Newport News is not like that. And if they are, then I advise you again, like Dr. Bass says, get out and vote. Get out and vote for those people. If you want a new school, vote. We have a lot of eighteen year olders out there, or seventeen year olders that are coming up. One of the things we were teaching in the school, voting. The importance of voting, the importance of, your vote matters. It does matter. It tells those who are in charge, makes the decisions. Those who are in charge, make the decisions. So one of the things that we can, as a body and citizens out there, in television land, on computer land, you have to vote. Not just because it's not a presidential election, you have to vote. It's your right to vote. And by voting, then you get the people in there that you want to give the schools the money. To give schools the money. That's all we ask. So sometimes, you know, maybe we're attacking this problem the wrong way. If that doesn't work, you know, sometimes you've got to attack them from another end, right? So, that being said, I think we're doing a great job here in Newport News. I'm excited about the school year. And I would differ from, Mr. Harris, as he says, he didn't see any kids crying. We saw one at Hilton. We saw a kid about three years old, he was screaming to go to school. His parents were screaming, he was kicking, and he did not want to leave school. He was kicking, I want to, ah! So isn't that wonderful to see? To want to come to school, to want to go to school. He wanted to go. He did not want to go home with his parents. And I know all those parents that, I've never seen so many parents with smiles on their face as they left our school building. And especially thanks to our custodians, who had those schools looking just wonderful. You could eat off the floors, the cafeteria workers were ready, the bus drivers got our kids there safe. So all those support staff, thank you. And thank you for getting, having our schools ready, getting our children there on time. And we look forward to a wonderful and exciting year. year. That being said, if no other comments, I adjourn this meeting.
I've been sitting down all day, man.